Good evening and welcome to the August 28th, 2023, meeting of the Town of Barnstable Planning Board. My name is Steve Robichaud. Tonight's meeting will be held at the Barnstable Town Hall, 367 Main Street Hyannis, in the James H. Crocker Jr. Hearing Room, second floor this evening at 7:00 PM. And this meeting was previously filed with the town clerk. Application materials may be accessed through the Planning Board website at townofbarnstable.us/boardscommittees/planingboard, or by contacting Karen Herrend at karen HERND@town.barnstable MA.us, or calling 508-862-4064. And at this time, we will now introduce our board members. Matt?
Matthew Teague, good evening.
Thank you. Mary?
Mary Barry, good evening.
And Ray?
Ray Sexton.
And Bob?
Bob Twish, good evening.
And Tim?
Tim O'Neil, good evening.
Thank you, Tim. And town staff, Karen?
Karen Herrend, Planning and Development.
And Jim?
Good evening. Jim Cufford, Planning and Development.
Excellent. Thank you all. Notice of recording, this meeting of August 28th, 2023, is being recorded and broadcast on the Town of Barnstable's Government Access Channel in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. I will now inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, please make your presence known. Seeing none, we will proceed to the public comment portion of this meeting. This is public comment not related to any of the agenda items we have this evening. If anybody has any public comment, please make yourself known. Seeing none, we will move on to our first item this evening, which is general business, a comprehensive wastewater management plan update from DPW. Come on down, introduce yourselves, and take it away. Good evening, welcome. Make sure the mic is hot and go for it.
So, good evening. My name is Rob Steen.
I'm Kelly Tolkie.
We're from the Department of Public Works, and we're here to talk to you about the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. So, there's a number of ways we could do this. Mr. Chair, I'm assuming you want me to start right in, by the way?
Would love that, yeah. If you just want to go in with your presentation, I'm sure the board has questions, comments.
So, that's what I want to talk to you about. So, there's a number of ways we could do this. We have presentations that can take you literally from what is the problem and why is nitrogen an issue, up through the plan, et cetera. My expectation is by now, you as an audience probably have heard a lot of that and don't need that repeated to you. So, what I'd rather do, my preference is to have a conversation, basically. If you have questions, to be able to answer those questions and sort of discuss whatever it is that's on your mind regarding the CWMP. However, if you want a more comprehensive discussion, we can certainly talk at you for any length of time. The one aspect that I do want to salvage out of all of this, for sure, is Kelly is our Communications Manager in the DPW principally for the CWMP and has rebuilt our website. And I want to give her an opportunity at some point throughout this to sort of walk you through the website. Because what we find as we go talk to people is that a lot of the stuff that we get asked is actually answered on the website. And so, that sort of teach a man to fish thing, to that level, we like to spend a little bit of time in having her talk through that. But beside from that, we can task Taylor to however you want this to go. So, would you prefer, you know, sort of a very rudimentary start, right back at the beginning? You know, what is the issue and why CWMP and TMDLs and things of that nature? Or is that now common knowledge and we can get right into Kelly's part and then into the plan and sort of talking through whatever questions you have about it?
Well, I do think that, yes, a lot of that is common knowledge at this point, but I personally would love just a super quick kind of Cliff Notes version of how we got to where we are.
It's a pleasure.
Just a quick summary, if you will, and then get into more lively discussion.
Okay. So, let me run through this. I will probably...
Let me give Ray a chance to make a comment.
Sorry, Ray. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so, I will raise my hand and say I do need to be educated. Okay. And... And there's no shame in that. I just don't want to bore an audience that's heard something 18 times before.
We'll find out. I'm not ashamed.
Good. We're good.
And I do have some questions that hopefully you've been apprised of and that we'll get to. I think it would be good, Socratic dialogue would probably be useful at some point, but perhaps to start with, sort of, in the beginning, and here we are, and here's what we're planning. Is that acceptable, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely. Yeah.
So, with dramatic voice, "In the beginning."
Yes, please. The whole time.
So, welcome to the Town of Barnstable Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan presentation. What we will do, as I talked about, is we're going to kind of go through the problem set. I'm going to do that very quickly. I will also very quickly talk through potential solutions because that may inform some of the conversations we have later on tonight. Kelly will then sort of talk through the plan and the implementation of the plan because she will utilize the website as a basis of that so that people become more comfortable going to there as the tool to do that. And then, as I said, the part that we're really here to do is spend time with you all and answer any questions you may have and sort of help you understand how that may fit into the Planning Board's general purview. So, in general, wastewater on Cape Cod has a number of problems. The one that we particularly hear the most about is the nitrogen problem, otherwise known as the 208 problem. And really, what the essence of that is, is in saltwater embayments, the limiting nutrient is nitrogen, meaning everything else is present for there to be explosive growth except nitrogen. So, when you add nitrogen to it, then algae and other things of that nature can really start to take off. And what you'll see on the right-hand side of this picture is sort of three different snapshots at three different points in time with the amount of nitrogen that's in a system. The top left is a low nitrogen system. The bottom right is a high nitrogen system and sort of the bottom middle is the in-between. And you can see as nitrogen increases in the area, for reasons that I'll soon talk about, it starts to have a real detrimental effect on the estuary itself. The origins of nitrogen are listed here in the system. A different way to look at that is this way. This comes directly from the 208 plan. And what this will show you is sort of the percentage of nitrogen in our systems from various sources, stormwater, septic systems, runoff, et cetera. The difference between the circle on the left and the circle on the right is the circle on the left is non-controllable nitrogen. The circle on the right is controllable nitrogen. The difference principally there is atmospheric deposition. We cannot control the amount of nitrogen that comes from atmospheric deposition. That is built into the circle on the left. The circle on the right does not have that. And what you'll see that of the controllable nitrogen sources, about 80% of that is from septic systems. So, there was no way when we started to look at this problem back in 2015, early 2016, to start to address this problem without having a conversation about septic systems and how we deal with wastewater on Cape Cod. I.e., you weren't going to be able to stormwater your system out of it or fertilize your system, fertilize your way out of it, or limit fertilizers to do that. So, let's talk about how that nitrogen affects systems. So, if you're looking at a healthy ecosystem, if there's healthy level of nutrients, algae growth is limited, sunlight penetrates water, submerged aquatic grasses use sunlight to make food. In our case, eelgrass is considered the canary in the mine regarding our estering systems. Healthy grasses provide habitat for organisms, and they also produce oxygen. And you have a healthy aquatic system. However, if you have excessive levels of nutrients, well, you'll end up getting is algae explosion, and those nutrients will fuel supercharged growth. Algae will cloud the water. That will block sunlight. Bacteria will feed on the algae when it dies. That will consume oxygen. And then, what you'll end up with is those organisms that can leave will do so. Those that can't will perish. So, that's a really quick nutshell in terms of how that nitrogen in this system can affect it. Now, conversely, though we're not here necessarily to speak to it directly, freshwater bodies, nitrogen's not the issue. It's phosphorus. And it has a very similar effect, but phosphorus is the limiting nutrient in freshwater bodies and will supercharge a freshwater body. Any questions on that?
The issues with some of the freshwater ponds and the algae blooms? The phosphorus is what's caused that? And is that also caused from Title V septic?
Generally, yes.
Okay.
So, the state got together and said, "Look, we've got this issue with nitrogen and saltwater bodies. How do we want to deal with this?" So, Mass. DEP and UMass Dartmouth got together and started to do studies of basically the southeastern Massachusetts estering systems. And they looked at about 90 of them in total. What came out of that were reports on each and every one of those systems that looked at what would be a healthy nitrogen level in that system for that system to thrive, again, using eelgrass as the canary in the mine shaft on that. DEP took those reports, converted them into what's called total maximum daily loads, TMDLs. It's effectively a pollutant budget for the system that says, "Hey, if you keep your nitrogen level below this, this should be, based on modeling, a healthy system." So, we now have TMDLs on all our southern embayments that tells us a level of nitrogen that we need to get below. As I talked about, eelgrass is a sentinel species, and the way they manage the water flow on the Cape is through watersheds. So, does everybody here understand what a watershed is, or should I go into this? I'll go into it. Okay. So, if you look at the Cape here in this map here, you'll notice all these yellow lines. These do not delineate towns. These delineate watersheds. And what a watershed is, if I take a drop of water anywhere in that watershed and drop it, it will run to the outlet of that watershed. It won't cross the watershed boundary. So, it basically is a way of organizing the water that's within that watershed. It's a pretty crucial concept as we go forward in this conversation. So, if somebody is confused by that or if I'm not being clear, please let me know, and I'm happy to go back through this again. But really, if you want to think about it, it is sort of the way we can sort of organize the water flow and know that water from this particular area will end up in a certain place and not cross over into other places. So, when we began this process, we had the TMDLs and we had the work from UMass Dartmouth, the MEP. And what came out of that was this. And what this shows us is the amount of nitrogen from our southern embayments. And so, what you're looking at here, by the way, is Barnstable and sort of our four southern embayments, really five. And it shows us the amount of nitrogen on average that must be removed from each one of these embayments for it to be healthy. So, for instance, in the Three Bays, we need to remove 60% of the nitrogen that's currently in the Three Bays for it to be healthy. Now, what this doesn't tell you is about the future. It's 60% of the existing nitrogen in the Three Bays area, but almost by definition, it's 100% of the future nitrogen. So, even though you may see 23% of the nitrogen in Lewis Bay needs to be removed, and that doesn't sound like that big of a deal, it's 100% of the future nitrogen in Lewis Bay as well. The other thing to notice is that these are all on a watershed basis. However, what the regulators do and the way the model works is it works on a subwatershed basis, which is what you see here. So, what this was, was this was a model run that showed approximately how much nitrogen we need to remove from each of these subwatersheds in order to achieve those averages. So, you'll notice there's parts of the Three Bays watershed, for instance, where there's 0% that needs to be removed. However, there's other parts where there's 100% that needs to be removed. That deals with how that watershed interacts with the primary, the subwatershed interacts with the primary watershed, et cetera. Now, that's the nitrogen piece. When the CWMP was coming along, and as we were looking at it, we were also considering other issues. Phosphorus, as we already mentioned, is the issue for freshwater ponds. We're dealing with that in a different way than the CWMP, though the CWMP is now starting to adapt to some of those issues that are coming up through that other management plan. CECs, I'm sure people are starting to hear about CECs in our waste system, and also PFOS, PFOA. All of those are now emerging contaminants that we're also having to think through. At the end of the day, the task of the CWMP was the following. It was to really understand on which properties was a traditional Title V system an adequate means of providing the town sanitation and environmental protection. Which properties is it not? So, the first part of the CWMP was to look at all the problems and sort of quantify the problems and figure out what we need to do. The second part was to look at potential solutions and decide which of those solutions were most appropriate for us. Solutions really fall into three broad categories. Traditional would be what most people would consider a large pipe. They are sewers. They are wastewater plants. They're very, the traditional way of dealing with it. There's very, there's advantages to those, which I'm happy to speak to if people want to go down those roads. There's also disadvantages to them. Non-traditional solutions are things like aquaculture, PRBs, IA systems, alternative toilets, those kinds of things that are not sort of the large pipe solution. And then, there's management. And you and your board particularly play a part in this last piece. Because if you look at the management aspects of the way to deal with wastewater, flow and load reductions and regulations, that's probably us or Board of Health. Zoning, that's all you. If we talk about the fact that future nitrogen, 100% of it has to be removed, and I'm not advocating this position, by the way, I'm using it only as to illustrate a point, one of the ways that that could be done is the town could say there will be no future nitrogen. Now, as again, I'm not advocating that as a point, nor is that a basis of the CWMP, but that is a way potentially to deal with that. So, zoning has a role to play. The other reason why zoning's got a role to play in this is that through time, in Massachusetts particularly, Title V has been a de facto zoning regulation. When we start to go and sewer the areas we're going to sewer, and you're going to see it's about half the town by the time we're done, that goes away. So, that way of controlling growth, that way of managing how our town evolves is no longer there, and then it falls back to planning departments and planning boards and other such entities to start to decide, okay, how do we want to grow? Where do we want to grow? And what do we want to look at? Because that Title V regulation, once there's a sewer in front of the house, isn't applicable.
So, in your last bit there, you talked about zoning and that the town could say, "No nitrogen," which strikes me as King Canute saying to the tide, "Don't come in."
Well, I mean, the way you'd say that, he'd say, "No to growth."
What exactly does that mean?
So, what you'd say is, and as we talked about with the watersheds, you know, we can address the nitrogen that's there now. We've even built in a certain amount of build-out into those plans. However, and this is purely a theoretical conversation, please. The plan does not advocate this. I don't want anyone to interpret that. But just to illustrate the point, an approach the town could have taken was to say, "There will be no growth from here forward, so thus, there's no new nitrogen being added to the system." And again, I'm going to reemphasize, we are not advocating that, and I don't want a soundbite to come out of this that shows, "Hey, DPW's saying we're no to growth." But it's strictly to illustrate the point that that is a way zoning can play a part in this. Now, there's less extreme versions of that that can go forward.
Yeah. So, essentially, you know, you're saying that everything that is in front of us is based on our current conditions, and anything additional isn't factored in, and that's why 100% of future isn't...
No, that's actually not. What I'm saying is, I'm saying the plan is actually built to factor in some of the future conditions. In fact, a lot of the future conditions. But when we're talking purely about the tools as theoretical constructs, what each of those tools can do, the zoning piece could be utilized to limit future growth, which would then mean there'd be less technical need for us to do things from either the traditional and non-traditional side. We've made the assumption for the planning committee and for the town that that would not be something that they would want to do. So, we've built into the plan future build-out, in fact, additional build-out on top of future build-out, which I'll explain to you later, to sort of accommodate what we assume will be there. But the Planning Board, speaking to you, has a role in this to some extent in two fronts. One, with Title V going away, there will be a void potentially behind that. Two, the Planning Board could take, though, again, not advocating, a more activist role in terms of what future growth looks like to limit what has to happen on the wastewater collection and treatment or alternative technologies front. Am I clear at that?
Yeah, understood.
The plan does accommodate the future. I'm just trying to highlight the theoretical aspects that each entity can take within the building of this work.
Sure, sure.
Does that make sense now?
It does. Yeah. One quick question about the initial pie charts that you showed. The percentage you showed for sewer, does that percentage change as large, you know, buildings are added, such as the one on, you know, over by BJ's? What's the name of that one again?
I forget. The Hanover Company one?
Yeah, the big one. Off Wilkins.
So, I think what you're asking, let me answer it this way.
Does that percentage number change?
No. So, the percentage number is what the percentage number is. So, the subwatershed in the Three Bays area that I need to remove 100% of the current nitrogen and future nitrogen from, regardless of what you put there, I've got to remove 100% of the current and future nitrogen there. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. If you go back to the pie charts, though?
Oh, how much of the current is the sewer?
Yeah.
Oh, 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 yeah. This. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Say you're looking at those, and then you add 1,000 apartments, but they're all on sewer. Does that sewer number go way up, the wastewater treatment facility?
No, because the wastewater is a Title V septic number.
Yeah, okay.
So, if it's on sewer, by definition, that number's coming, we're addressing that number by putting them on sewer. So, the difference is...
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, you say you add 1,000 units. Will that wastewater treatment facility go from 5% to 20%?
So, the wastewater treatment facility is the residual that's in the nitrogen. So, all right, backing up. So, currently, the wastewater treatment facility that we have existing today is regulated to 10 milligrams per liter of nitrogen in its effluent. As a comparison, your average home for the Title V septic system probably gets like 26, 27, maybe even higher, milligrams per liter of effluent nitrogen. What our system actually gets is about six. We're actually upgrading the system to get three. Actually, even less than three, which is probably, by the time we're done, going to be, if not state-of-the-art, close to the state-of-the-art in terms of that. And I can bore you, and trust me, that's one of my projects. I can bore you at length and in detail on that one.
That's great to hear, but really, the only thing I'm kind of getting at is as we continue to improve, approve more projects that are going to the wastewater treatment facility, should there be any concern with us of that percentage going way up?
No, because we built it in. So, all of this, the way all of this gets...
As you're capturing more, you're actually getting more efficient in your system?
We're getting more efficient, but more importantly, the way all of this gets truthed out is we've gone and modeled all of this at the year 30 point. So, that entire Lewis Bay watershed system's been modeled based on all the flow that we're projecting coming to it, going to it. The amount of treatment that we are going to get out of it, which is why we're taking the treatment plant to three, and any additional sewer-ing we need to do in the Lewis Bay watershed to accommodate and offset some of that residual. So, the modeling is building that all in. And that is, there's a couple of questions that are going to come later, I think, as we get into this discussion about, you know, why this versus this. And a lot of that's informed by the modeling that now goes through and says, "Okay, you can achieve, you're going to achieve your goals in terms of land usage at the Sentinel stations for TMDLs with all of this going on." And we had to throw all of that into there to make that work.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
Okay, great. Bob, did you have something you wanted to mention? You're all set?
I can ask that question now, I suppose, if it's convenient.
Go for it.
Do you have anyone speaking into the microphone?
I can address that now, Mr. Chair. It may be a convenient time in light of the discussion we've just had. The question that I had earlier today, which I passed on to staff, who passed it on to you through this question I'm about to ask you, is when I, in preparation for the meeting, I looked at the fiscal year 2022 report, and in there, there's an Appendix A, which has a map of the town and it's color-coded, Phase 1, 2, 3.
We're about to show it to you.
I'm sorry?
We're about to show it to you.
Oh, okay. And the question I had for Jim is that when I looked at it, I was aware that there were maybe some neighborhoods in the town that we weren't anticipating having sewer for, for a variety of reasons. But what struck me was it was such a huge percentage of the map is in white, which suggested to me that because it's not color-coded and everything that's in the first three phases is color-coded, that the white means that there's no current plan for sewer in the white areas. I'm guessing that's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. And my follow-up question is, why not in the white areas? And I'm looking at the map you just put up on the screen, and it looks like many of the areas that are white are showing a need to eliminate 0% of existing nitrogen and phosphorus.
So, two or three things happened there. One is, yes, you're correct. As it currently is constructed, the plan doesn't deal with the areas that are in white, driven principally because there's not a TMDL driver on those areas. That said, there's nothing that stops the town from in the future. And when Kelly starts to bring the map up, I want to revisit this question because it's going to be easier, I'm a visual person. I can point to things. That said, there's nothing that stops the town from at some point in time saying, "Hey, wait a minute. We'd want to just sewer all of this." And as such, we're anticipating some of that. And so, when I talked about build-out, and yet we're on top of build-out potentially in the plan, one of the design features we're doing is we're really anticipating some of those white areas at some point in the time, at least in the future, if not in my professional lifetime and Kelly's, coming to the town and saying, "We'd like to be included as well" and producing some capacity to be able to do that. But we'll get to that when we get into the mapping and some of that. I want to get back to this, though. I'm not trying to blow off. I did want to touch this, though, because to some extent, this answers a little bit of that. In that, when we were looking at the TMDLs and trying to figure out, you know, where do we need to sewer, and being cognizant of cost? I mean, the plan at this point in time is a 30-year, $1.4 billion plan. More sewer-ing, more dollars, more pump stations, more things of that nature. So, we were trying to be cognizant of all of that and balancing of all of that. That's why there's areas that aren't driven to it, aren't required to do it as part of the TMDL process. Yet, the town may at some point in time in the future, for other reasons, decide that they want to go that way.
Let me ask a follow-up question. That's really a finance-driven question. So, if you don't know the answer, please don't hesitate to tell me you don't know the answer.
Oh, I won't.
But through Phase 3, as we're talking tonight, those parcels of land that are shown in the white areas, which are not in Phases 1, 2, and 3, are those homeowners going to get hit the assessment?
No. Well, first of all, I am not a financial person. I don't play one on TV. I defer all financial questions to Mark Milne. He's done a number of really good presentations to Town Council and other on this topic, and I would encourage you all to watch that. My understanding of those presentations, and again, I am not the final authority on this, is that the people that are going to be charged assessments are the people that are actually going to connect to the sewer, not the people that are not. Now, that does not mean that there's not other impacts fiscally to the town for people that are not. But the assessments themselves, that $10,000 a list, will go to the people that actually are connecting into the sewer and gaining that.
And the reason I ask that question is that I know that some of the people who have parcels in white areas have received informational notices from the town saying, "Hey, you're going to get assessed X number of dollars when, you know, when it comes through your area." And of course, it makes sense that if it's not coming through your area, you wouldn't be assessed. But there's going to be questions because people are going to say, "Hey, our roads are being torn up. You know, we've got this whole thing with the wind and the offsets of the construction costs, but oh, by the way, I'm never getting sewer." And am I going to get hit $16,000 to assess my house? I think what you're telling me is the answer... The answer to that is no.
Well, what I'm telling you is my interpretation of Mark's answer is no, but you need to go to Mark for the official answer.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we were here with this fundamental question, and that leads us into potential solutions. Traditional, non-traditional, and management. We talked a little bit about zoning and how that might play into this as we're talking to the Planning Board. Traditional looks kind of like this. And again, if this is old news to you guys, let me know, and I will blow through this in a much faster way. Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
What's fertigation?
Fertigation?
I just love it. I feel like calling in an airstrike.
No. Fertigation is if I take, so if I have a nitrogen, let's think of it this way. If I have nitrogen-rich water, and I've got a big field, instead of fertilizing that big field with fertilizer, if I take the nitrogen-rich water from the ground and I use it to water the big field, and the natural nitrogen that's in that water utilizes, is effectively fertilizing that big field. Where you'll see that a lot, it's like golf courses and things of that nature. You know, where that will happen, where you can, you're trying to do two things at once. You're leveraging a resource that's otherwise a waste product and the nitrogen in the water at that point in time, and you're trying to get it out of the waste product. And at the same point in time, create a healthy turf and feed that turf without using an artificial nitrogen source that brings even more nitrogen to the area. That's fertigation. Now, it's simplified. Obviously, there's more issues that go with it than that, but that's on the broadest spell. It's all Kelly. She's the communications person. I'm just an engineer. Anyways, so, basically, what this is meant to show is if you have a neighborhood and that grid in the top bubble is meant to represent a neighborhood, you'll collect wastewater out of a neighborhood. Usually, there'll be pump stations involved with conveying it. You'll move it to a wastewater treatment facility. You'll treat it there, and we'll talk a little bit about that, and then you'll dispose of it. Collecting it out of a neighborhood looks like this. And this really came up when we started having conversations with the community about sewer collection and stuff. And it became pretty apparent pretty quickly that many people didn't understand what that was about. Really, in a nutshell, what happens is if you have a sewer in front of your house, Really, in a nutshell, what happens is, if you have a sewer in front of your house, your wastewater, instead of running into a Title V system, probably out back in most homes, probably runs out the front to the sewer system, or is pumped out the front, if you're too low, to the sewer system. We then try to, the engineer's game on this is to try to leverage gravity as much as we can to our advantage, so we will try to use gravity to have the water flow by gravity to low points. Once we get to those low points, we now need to get it up to the next high point, so it can flow by gravity again to the next low point, and that's what a pump station is. So, water comes, as you see here, from the homes, flows by gravity to a low point, a pump station there pumps it to the next high point, where it then flows by as much gravity as we can utilize, because gravity's free, all the way along to that. So, as an example, when we start talking about the wastewater plan going forward, we currently in town have, I think on the order of like 50 pump stations, we're about to add probably another 120 or so. So, there's a lot of pump stations that are required to move water up and down hills and back to where you want to take it to. This is our wastewater treatment facility, I can walk you through the processes if you wish, my guess is you don't want me to do that, but leave it to be that there's not only primary and secondary treatment happening here, there's also some tertiary treatment happening here. We are about to completely upgrade this facility to take it, as I said, from a regulated 10, probably achieving 6 milligrams per liter of nitrogen, to a facility that's hopefully getting sub 3 or 3 on a routine basis. Wastewater treatment. So, I started giving wastewater treatment conversations, oh, 20 years ago, and I started doing it in the state of Maine, and was trying to explain wastewater treatment to a bunch of Mainers, and what came out of that was this. Wastewater treatment is inverse farming. And what I mean by that is, if you think about a farm, you're bringing food to an animal, say, because you want that animal to do something for you. You want its milk, you want it to pull a cart, you want to get wool from it, you want to do something of that nature. You're bringing food to it, because you want it to be something for you. Wastewater treatment's kind of opposite of that. Wastewater treatment brings food to animals, because it wants to get rid of the food. It doesn't care about the animals. In fact, at the end of the day, we throw them away. We waste them. Wastewater treatment is generally a biological process, where you have aeration tanks full of bacteria and biota that are consuming organic carbon and other things, in the, what you'll see below, in the equation below, and producing a number of byproducts. But at the end of the day, we settle out all that bacteria, and we waste it, that's sludge. When you hear us talking about wastewater sludge, and where we're taking our wastewater sludge, and things of that nature, that's what that is. It is those "animals," quote-unquote, that we have been utilizing to reduce the food level in the water, so we put that water back in the environment, the natural animal population doesn't explode and create low oxygen areas. Does that make some sense? So, that's wastewater treatment. So, when you're thinking about it, it's inverse farming. And then, if you want to talk about nitrogen treatment, the way that works is, what comes out of our homes is basically the top box, it's organic nitrogen, it's proteins, it's urea, it's things of that nature, over the course of traveling through piping, and when it first gets to the plant, it usually converts to ammonia nitrogen. We then oxygenate it to get it to convert to nitrite and in a nitrate. The interesting thing about our animals is that they can work in both oxygenated areas, where oxygen is the terminal electronic acceptor, and they can work in low oxygen or no oxygen areas, in some cases. So, if we then take that same population of animals with the nitrate and put them in an oxic area, a low oxygen area, what they'll do is, they'll cleave off those, that 3 oxygen on the backside of the nitrate, and the nitrogen will escape as gas. Purely a biological process. Same thing happens in IA systems, when you're talking to people about IA systems, the same thing happens with PRBs, if you're talking to people about PRBs, this is how you get rid of nitrogen on a bigger scale with wastewater. You take it as a urea, it converts to ammonia pretty quickly, you oxygenate it to get nitrite and nitrate, you then put it in a low oxygen area, where it will cleave off those oxygens to use as their terminal electronic acceptors, and that nitrogen escapes as gas. That's traditional wastewater. Inverse farming, and this process, both of which are biological processes. Non-traditional solutions, we talked a little bit about them, we did mention fertigation already, which you'll notice is the top right corner box is the fertigation picture. There's also PRBs, permanent reactive barriers, that have been discussed a lot in town, more a decade or so ago, but they're still out there. There's dredging to open up channels, kind of flushing, there's aquaculture, which you've heard of, a number of communities that have gotten more involved in recently, and then there's urine-diverting toilets, where you're taking urine and you're trying to create a separate waste stream of it, and capturing it and potentially making struvite with it. So, a number of different ways to do non-traditional solutions. There's also the management solutions, we talked about zoning, not least amongst them. This brings us to the plan. I will quickly touch on two or three aspects of it, and then I'm going to hand the mic over to Kelly. So, the plan is a three-year plan, excuse me, a 30-year plan based on three phases. First phase is year 010, we are at year 1 and 3/4, something of that nature at this point in time. The next phase is years 20 to 10 to 20, and then the phase after that's 20 to 30. In a nutshell, what the plan's going to do is, we will be sewer-ing probably on the order of 190 miles of roads, there's probably about 12,000 parcels in total that will now be getting sewer, and as I said, there'll be 87 plus the existing ones, will get us to about 120 pump stations. There is a non-traditional aspect to the plan, it is currently focused in the Three Bays region, and I can speak to why that is, if somebody wants to go down that road, but really, what we're looking at...
Yeah, you might as well.
Yep. So, when we get into the Three Bays region, you'll also start to talk about phasing, and that's the area where Phase 3 is. So, north of Route 28 is Phase 3, that's the 20 to 30-year portion of sewer-ing. It makes sense for us to be doing a lot of this stuff in an area where I've got time to figure out if it's going to work before I have to go put in sewer. So, what we're doing is looking at the Marston's Mills River system, starting at the very north, where Barnstable Clean Water Coalition is looking at cranberry bogs and old cranberry bogs, and how to leverage old cranberry bogs for nitrogen removal. We're looking at Mill Pond and how to dredge Mill Pond. Mill Pond is currently getting between, it's somewhere on the order of about 11% nitrogen removal from the pond, most healthy ponds get about 50% nitrogen removal, and that's principally because Mill Pond is silted in over the years, it's a man-made pond that's over the past 300 years is silted in. And then, we are going to go down to the lower part of the river system and start looking at aquaculture in Warren's Cove, starting at the top, deal with it at the cranberry bogs, hit it again at Mill Pond, and then polish it up down at Warren's Cove. We're hopeful that those three things can do a lot, we're in the process of pursuing them all, and we are going to start monitoring them all once they're in. When we start to talk about the phases, and when we have the phase map up, I can then sort of talk about why this is going to matter, in terms of why it's there and what we're doing with it.
Mr. Chairman, so, I'm really interested in that.
Yep.
Specifically, two things, the Catuit Bay inlet dredging, that was just announced, I think, by, what, Keating or whoever, or Markey, we're getting a grant of like a half a million dollars for that, or is that a different project?
So, there's been a number of grants already done, the dredging has been completed there. So, what we did is, we brought that spit back, redeposited that sand on, basically Audubon land, on birdland at this point in time, and are now watching to see what the effect on the bay is, and are doing the monitoring to see, okay, was the impact significant, was the impact not significant, and stuff like that. Early returns are, the impact was there, but minimal, but we're still looking at that.
Okay, the other thing is, and this is what distresses me, and I think, hopefully, Jim gave you a heads up, but I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, when to discuss this, but I will, I will put a marker on the table for when you think it appropriate, but Shoestring Bay isn't even on the map.
It is, in fact, and so, we will be getting to there?
Well, it's not on that map.
Well, not on that map, no.
So, that's what I have in front of me right now.
Understood. Let me get into the, let me get into the phases.
If I'm jumping ahead, please.
Yep, let me get into the phases, and then we will, we will come right back to that.
Terrific, thank you.
Because there's a long history that we have with that. All right. So, with that, I'm going to pass it to Kelly and let her walk you through the website, and then we'll hang on to the map, and we'll do a lot of our discussions from that.
All right, so, as Rob just sort of walked you through the genesis behind the CWMP, what the problem is, the task I had when I joined the Department of Public Works is, how do we communicate to the public? And how do we do this in a way that is easy to comprehend, you know, reduces the number of clicks to find the relevant information?
It's not easy to comprehend?
It is, but not everyone wants to dive into the nitty-gritty behind the CWMP, they want to know sort of where they fall in the sewer expansion plan, if they're getting sewer, how much it's going to cost, what's the commute going to be to their favorite coffee shop on their way to work in the morning. So, we took all of that, that content and that feedback from the community over the last probably 11 months, I think, I've been with the team, and we redesigned the Barnstable Water Resources website, specifically to be able to tell that story. So, we don't have to go through the website in that much detail, but I certainly do want to walk you through the homepage, which I think does a very good job of telling that high-level story, and then we'll look at where you can find more information on the plan, and then specifically, the phasing maps that Rob mentioned. So, on the homepage, we have sort of our hot-button issues right in that top yellow box there. Am I eligible for new sewer? It takes folks directly to the assessor's database, where they can look up their property, and on their property card, find out if they are currently slated for sewer in Phase 1, 2, or 3. From there, they can call our office, ask for me, and if they are part of Phase 1, I can give them a better sense of what the timeline is, and what of the, which of the 16 projects in Phase 1 they potentially fall into. How do I hook up? Very self-explanatory, walks you through what we have boiled down to an eight-step sewer connection process, which includes the town construction as part of that timeline. Anticipated cost is the same thing, it breaks down really the three main costs for a property owner, the first being the assessment, which Rob touched upon, the second being the connection cost for connecting the building on the property to the sewer service stub left in the roadway, and then the third being your utility billing. Septic abandonment is also included in that connection cost process, as most of the private installers will help walk through that process in conjunction with the Board of Health and the Health Department. And then, road closures looks at exactly what you expect, what our construction progress is, where we have active construction, and then utilizes a Ways4Cities partnership that we have that allows us to update maps through Waze, Google Maps, and Apple Maps in real time, when we have road closures and detours. So, walking through the homepage, you're going to see a lot of what Rob touched upon, but in a more high-level, again, sort of friendly storytelling, not that Rob isn't friendly, Rob is friendly and lovable, but in a really conversational way. So, we talk about the quality of life, again, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here, because Rob's covered this in great detail for you already, but we look at the seven watersheds, including some of the subwatersheds, that we really are focusing on the CWMP, and how this plan is going to help us meet those TMDLs, and then also touch upon some of the watersheds that may not have a TMDL yet, but are still included in part of the CWMP plan. Then, we get to our three phases, you know, each phase being a 10-year map. We can click on this map and make it a little bit larger for you, so that you can actually talk through it with Rob. Sorry, it's a little awkward doing it on the big screen, but I promise it's much easier. Here we go. Okay, I just didn't know if it was big enough for everyone to see, but...
You can also use that computer over there, it might be easier to read.
There we go, it opened a new tab for us. So, this is our 30-year, what I would say, our 30-year map, shows you the three phases as well, the stages, and I'll let Rob walk you through this process before we look at the Phase 1 map and implementation schedule.
Okay, so, you guys have it in front of you on your screens, I'm assuming it's not as bleached out on your screens, for those people at home, it's probably more difficult to see, you'll see the red, well, so, what you're looking at is the town of Barnstable, up being north, down being south. The red portion in the middle, right in the sort of top-right corner of that is Lake Hawkeet, and then, over to the right of that, there's some gray areas. The gray areas are already sewered areas, the red portion is the Phase 1 that we talked about, sewer-ing that's going to occur between years 0 and 10. There is green that is basically Osterville, north of, north of the Three Bays area, and then sort of south in the Centerville River area, those areas are in Phase 2, that's year 20 to 30, excuse me, 10 to 20. And then, the yellow areas, which is sort of Marston's Mills, is the areas that are year 20 to 30. Now, to Raymond's point, Shoestring Bay, in the purple. So, let me, let me give you just a little history on Sho...
Purple means we're screwed?
No. Purple means you're the best. No. So, let me give you a little history on Shoestring Bay. So, when we initially started this plan way back in 15, I don't know, 16, or whatever the heck it was, the initial plan was, because if you look at Shoestring Bay and our contributions to Popanessett Bay, it's a very small percentage, so the initial plan was, we'd do a nitrogen trade with Marston's Mills, with Mashpee. And then, a number of people from the Shoestring Bay area, one in principle, came up and talked to me, actually, to talk, I think it was under this room, where he said, hey, look, you know, I understand why you're doing that, Shoestring Bay needs help now, if you just trade nitrogen away and pay for projects on other places in the Popanessett Bay region, it doesn't necessarily help Shoestring Bay, we'd prefer you not to do that. So, we went back and looked at the Shoestring Bay and Catuit area, looked at the modeling, and then came up with the stages, which are the areas in purple. And the reason why there are the stages is, they're not tied to a timeline like Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3 is. The reason for that is because we needed to figure out where we were going to go with that wastewater. We had a number of options. One was to come back this way and come to this treatment plant, our treatment plant. Two, at the time, we were looking seriously at JBCC on Joint Base Cape Cod and heading, sending wastewater over there. Now, that's a 22-mile hike, by the time you actually dispose of it over there, it's 11 miles to the plant and another 11 miles to the disposal site. And then, three was, we were in discussions with Sandwich about a joint plant with Sandwich and potentially sending it to there. At this point, where I think that's all leading is that we will probably bring it back to us. So, I would expect that the stages are going to be executed in Phase 2. And principally, the reason why it's Phase 2 is because we've got to get out there for Phase 1, I need the piping out there to get back on, if you know what I'm saying. So, it's going to take us a while, if you look at that red stretch that goes down 28, that's going to take us the better part of a decade to get all the way down 28 to 149 and beyond. Just, construction alone takes time, and particularly, construction in 28 takes time, that's, that's just the realities of that. Once we're there, though, then we can meet up with what's going on in the Catuit area and bring it back. I've since then, or we've since then started a more refined conversation on the Catuit area to say, look, if IAs pan out, and the Barnstable Clean Water Coalition and EPA and a number of people are looking at a number of higher-level IA systems, if they pan out, and if they can treat wastewater to levels that they think they may be able to, we may be able to do something more of a hybrid approach in that Shoestring Bay area, and if that's the case, we can implement that sooner, with the caveat that DPW has no control over enforcing septic system replacements or things of that nature. That's where Board of Health has to get on board, because jurisdictionally, we cross the line to Board of Health at that point.
Rob, just to back up.
Go, Tim.
I know what IA system is, but maybe some of the other board members don't, and kind of where that stance, I know the Title V stuff's changing and all of that, but if you want to...
Yep, so, individual augmentation systems, so what they are is, if you look at like, for those of us that were on the Cape back in the cesspool days, and then we went to Title V systems, IAs are sort of the next evolution beyond Title V systems. They're systems that are meant to deal with nutrients, whereas the Title V systems were not. Title V systems were meant to deal with more traditional wastewater problems that cesspools didn't deal with. So, this is the next evolution in septic system development. So, at this point in time, what the state will approve, in terms of general approval on those things, is a 19-milligram-per-liter effluent limit on those systems. That doesn't get it done when we start looking at modeling. There is good data coming off of some of the initial work that's being done on some new IA systems, where it's in the 5 to 10 range, maybe even a little less, and if that pans out, and if the state approves those at a generally approved rate of that level, we can now go back and start to do the modeling to see, how much of that can we utilize, and can that go in faster to the Shoestring Bay area, to start to get help sooner than I can get there with a big pipe. So, does that sort of start to answer your question, Raymond?
Yeah, let me, let me follow on, Tim, do you have, you have any follow-up there?
Tim, do you have, you have any follow-up there?
Um, no, I've got questions further down the line on zoning stuff, but.
Shoestring Bay is fed by the Santuit River, which comes out of Santuit Pond, which is in Mashpee. The old-timey houses around Santuit Pond have cesspools. So the people that live around Santuit Pond that then feeds the Santuit River, that then empties into Shoestring Bay, literally, they flush their toilet and it goes into the water and it ends up in Shoestring Bay. Now, I don't know if you are familiar with the area, but this spring, it was just a filthy mess. It was green, yellow, and brown. There was a lady in Mashpee that had been raising the alarm because it wasn't just Shoestring Bay, it was also the Mashpee River and the, and the Popanessett Bay. And the selectmen there sort of patted her on the head and said, that's nice. And she went out and got a drone guy to do some aerial photographs and hit the front page of the Mashpee Enterprise, and it was disgusting. It was like a superfund site. And that was the, as we used to say, I just came from DC. And if you know what above the fold means, it means that their story is on the Washington Post, above the fold, and you're in big trouble because everybody sees it. The other, the other article that was above the fold was that the Board of Selectmen in Mashpee have called us an emergency meeting to figure out how to deal with the cesspools around Santuit Pond. So the point is, we could, we could IA our brains out in Catuit Highlands and whatever, that literally, that crap that's coming down there is the major reason why Shoestring Bay is rapidly turning into a sewer. So the bottom line, and this is, I think, didn't we talk, isn't Kelly, were you the one I got shunted to?
Probably.
Shunted to, that's so terrible. I talked, I talked to about three different departments and you know what, wait, let me, let me give you, and then let me give you, and then finally, let me, let me give you Kelly.
Kelly's the best person on the group, so.
At any rate.
You've got the best one when you get Kelly.
Because you were out there, you were participated with the sampling and all that.
No, that might've been Amber.
I was gonna say, it was probably Amber.
Amber's the one that runs the sampling program.
Okay, any rate, so we have the, two towns, one problem with two towns. And my question to you, and hopefully you have a good answer, is who's on point in Barnstable to get Mashpee motivated to actually start treating the source? Because as I said, we could do great stuff. I'm not sure if the, the, you know, the IA systems are, I've listened to some, some presentations, I guess they're better than Title V, but the bottom line is, is that some, the.
It's a shared problem.
Yeah, and so we need, we need to seriously reel in Mashpee and say, no kidding, what are you guys going to do? What are we going to do? Because the line goes right down the middle of Shoestring Bay and it goes out, and there's an awful lot of people in both towns that use that water and what have you. And I, I think it's, it really is time because water doesn't respect town boundaries.
Understood.
And so please, please make me feel better about this.
Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to. The person that's, that the people that are on point on that's DEP. We have no jurisdiction, as you'd imagine, into the town of Mashpee. I don't have the ability to go over there and talk, you know, and wag my finger at the DPW director and say, you need to be doing this.
I'm told, though, that there is somebody that, the town council at one point, there was some joint body to.
There's an IMA that's in, there's a sort of a joint discussion between the two towns. The, the state has talked about in the past about doing joint watershed permits between towns. There's lots of reasons that's problematic, which I can go into if you wish, but, but the, but the essence of it is, is that at this point in time, each community's got to develop its own watershed permit or be subject to, which I think what you're going to be asking, Tim, based on watching the meeting two times ago when you talked about it, the new Title V regulations. So at this point in time, the, the entity you're looking for, the entity that, that's the big brother that goes to Mashpee and says, Mashpee, you're not doing the right things, if that is true, and I'm not here to tell you it is or it isn't, that's DEP. They're that entity. We need to take care of what's going on in our community, and we are actively and diligently doing so. The people I've talked to in Mashpee's decision-making tree claim they are also working hard on those issues. But again, I don't speak for them and I don't have any leverage or pressure or political, pressure over the top of them.
I just, the reason I ask is because, and thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, it's, I think it's important that, speaking with our counselor, Jessica.
Yep.
What she said was that there was an entity, a joint coordinating entity.
There was.
But nothing really happened.
Yeah, there was, and what the entity, basically, my interpretation of that was that each, what each community agreed to do is to, was to create and execute its plan. There was no, purposely so, there was no opportunity for either community to leverage over the top of the other because to some extent, you can very quickly get to the point where a community's causing another community financial burden, and that gets sticky very quickly. So, so it, the problem with that whole watershed concept and making the communities have to work together to come to a watershed end is that at some point in time, the way our governmental systems and our fiscal systems are devised, doesn't match up with that.
Exactly.
You know, so what we can do and what we've advocated to do and what we are continuing to do and what your town council has done by spending, I think, over $100 million at this point in time towards starting to solve this problem, is to actively get the planning done, to actively start getting sewer in the ground, to actively start getting this problem fixed. I mean, I'll tell you what I've told in a number of groups. The problem we are currently working with and wrestling is a problem that's formed over generations, multiple generations. We are trying to fix it in one, but that doesn't mean it gets fixed in five years. It gets fixed so that my kids don't have to think about it, they could think about whatever the next problem is.
Right.
So we are going to fix two, three, four generations worth of development, worth of cesspools, worth of things of that nature going in the ground, not out of malice, they just didn't know any better. And hopefully, a generation from now, because of the efforts that we all do here, we will have a much better environment and a much better place for our kids and our kids' kids, and they don't have to think about it anymore. You know, if you think about it, I grew up in the state of Maine. When, when I was a kid, you didn't want to live on a river in the state of Maine. It stank, back, literally, if you went from Tops in the Brunswick, which is where I grew up, you could walk across the river on foam, I swear. It was different colors at different times. It was nasty.
I grew up on the Nogatuck River, which had a.
Yeah, so you see, so Edwin Muskie comes around clean.
Kents factory, and it changed color every week.
Exactly. You know, I remember going into Heartland, Maine, working on this wastewater treatment plant. There was a tannery in town, and you could tell what they were running because the stream was literally that color.
Okay, so I do have one other question.
So let me just finish the anecdote, though.
Yeah.
Edwin Muskie comes in, Clean Water Act comes in, and that was 19, what, 70, you know, you were from DC area, you know, that, that was when that came through. You know, yeah, exactly.
This year.
Yeah, so 50 years ago this year, we now have it so that you want to live on rivers in the state of Maine, you want to be on those entities, but it's taken a generation.
Right.
We will do the same thing here.
The point is, there's been an awful lot of can kicking around here, I've observed. The, but the one question, one other question, in terms of that Catuit, because Catuit is in, to the town of Barnstable, kind of, you know, the frontier. Why, what I didn't hear was an option of tying into Mashpee's system, which they're breaking ground in that area, quite frankly. Why not come across the, you know, Santuit River Bridge on School Street and, and then run up into Catuit Highlands?
So when you were in DC, you were working on the government side or were you working on the civilian side?
I, if I told you what I did, I'd have to kill you.
Ah. I did a little bit of that, too. That said, basically, the, the times that I've worked in other communities when I was a consultant before I came here, working with IMA agreements, they're difficult at best. They don't generally work well. That doesn't mean they can't. It doesn't mean we haven't had conversations about it, but, you know, we had a conversation, for example, with Yarmouth about bringing Yarmouth's wastewater into our plant and utilizing our plant for Yarmouth, et cetera. When you start to really get down to dollars and cents and starting to figure out who pays for what, it gets very sticky very quickly. So I think we have a good solution. I think the solution will work. It will take us probably a decade to get there, but we're coming. You know, that, that stretch of red that's, that red heading out to 149 is in design right now. You know, we're hoping that in the next year or two, we're causing all sorts of hate and discontent in terms of traffic congestion and all that stuff on 28 for the next couple of years. But that's, that's coming.
Good way to put it. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to say, Ed, thank you, Bob, I, I think you laid down some, some serious facts. Bottom line is, is that the whole thing, and you've said it, I mean, you banged your head against the wall. I, I understand, after 37 years in the federal government.
Yep.
I hear you, but it's got to get done, Mr. Chairman. Saying, okay, well, there's two, two towns and it's too hard, it can't be too hard because we're going to end up literally drinking our own waste at some time, or our kids will.
So what you'll, one of the things you'll see is, you know, what I would encourage you to go back and look at is, is your town council has been actively working this issue. You know, they have appropriated, I mean, I've worked in a number of communities as a consultant before I came here. This town council, starting with the person this room's named after, when he was part of the leadership team, and we met with him literally weekly on the CWMP, on, you know, developing the CWMP and managing the CWMP, all the way through to today with Matthew and all those other folks, they've been supportive, they've been generous, they've been spending money to solve the problem, they've been tolerant of the disruption that's going on out there, and Kelly gets the calls ad nauseam. So I, I, and where I say that is the, the kick the can down the road thing isn't the people that are currently on watch. The people that are currently on watch are working hard on that, and, and I would argue we're doing what they can do, as fast as we can come to them with projects, they're, they're approving them. The limitation is not on your leadership's willingness to get projects done, it's on our ability to execute them fast enough to make it make sense. So, so your leadership is working really hard on that, and I would just, I just wanted to spell that notion of people are of, because I've been in communities where they have, this is not one, where they're, they're working to avoid it or trying to kick it down the road or delay or any of that other stuff. They've actively taken this on and they're actively pursuing it, and we're actively solving the problem, witness Kelly sitting here and stuff.
That's great. Yeah, appreciate that.
All right, so that's the maps, these are the three phases. What else can I answer to you about the maps and the three phases before I let Kelly move on to the rest of her talk?
Well, I just hit on a couple of quick things. First of all, Kelly, I wanted to commend you on the website. The public is the most important, you know, facet of all of this, and it seems to be well laid out with simple information, and it looks like you, you got ahead of it. You didn't do that after the fact, you were ready, so I commend you on that. I just had two quick questions. What's the term, IA? Is that the right term? Okay. Is that just going to look forward or is that going to look back as well? Meaning, somebody in the town with Title V septic, will they be forced to get that upgraded?
Ah, so this goes to Tim's conversation about the new Title V regulations.
It'll only be going forward.
Okay, so can I wrap his conversation in with your conversation because they're connected?
Please do.
Okay. So what you were referring to before is the state has, over the past, I don't know, almost a year now, has been working on new regulations for Title V. It's been a long time since those regulations were updated, and they've just come out with the new regulations for Title V. They've also come out with regulations for watershed permits at the same time. The Title V regulations state that if you're in a nitrogen-sensitive area, an NSA, and if you don't have a watershed permit, then everybody within that nitrogen-sensitive area will need to upgrade their septic systems to a new IA system or the best available technology at the time, IA system, within a certain period of time. Five years, but it's also two years before the five years start, so it's realistically seven years.
I think they identified like the entire Cape as a nitrogen-sensitive area.
Yeah, that was my next question.
They identified large swaths of the Cape.
Do you have that map handy?
Yeah, there's, there's large swaths. However, here's the issue. The town of Barnstable, we've been in conversations with DEP about this. We feel that our DEP-approved, not two years ago, comprehensive wastewater management plan actually serves all the functions they want from a watershed management plan and can be the basis of a watershed permit. Our initial discussions with them is they agree with that. So we are literally, Kelly literally is writing the draft of the letter to apply for the watershed permit for the town of Barnstable, for the entire town of Barnstable.
For the entire town?
For the entire town.
Oh, wow.
So the CWMP covers the entire town, and it covers it on a 30-year timescale, as we've shown. We are asking for a watershed permit for the entire town on a 30-year timescale. I'm hoping that letter goes downrange to DEP in the next two weeks, which will get us into the queue on that watershed permit. Now, back to your point. Once we're under the watershed permit, in theory, DEP will no longer force homeowner X to replace a Title V with an IA system. However, the town may elect to say, when your Title V naturally ages out, or you move, at that point in time, replace with an IA system if you're not going to be seared within X number of years anyways. I am totally conjecturing, it's not within my purview or jurisdiction to say that, but the point of that is, I've had this question a number of times, that if you're under the watershed permit, do you still have to convert over? No, you could put Title V's in if you wish. However, the caveat to that is the town has the right to say, wait a minute, we don't think it makes a whole lot of sense to be spending the money we're spending on what we're doing to then go back and throw IA, throw Title V systems in everywhere when we know that there's problematic reasons not to do that.
Sure, that's logical, yeah.
So just didn't want someone to come away from here saying, hey, Rob said you didn't have to, the town certainly has the right to do it. The state will not be enforcing that, is what we've been told by DEP. I had a conversation with them not a couple of weeks ago about that.
Right, okay.
So does that answer both of your questions at once? Did I get both of you guys?
Well, you got me for sure. And I mean, certainly, it makes sense, you know, going forward that everything would be IA, o- only because it's the latest.
And again, analogy, I don't know who was here, I mean, I was here in the late 90s or the early 90s when we all had to flip over from cesspools to Title V's, and I remember it's, you're selling your house, you can't, you know, you got a cesspool, you got it before you can sell, you got to put the Title V in, and it stunk. I mean, I was in grad school at the time, I was like, I gotta go put it down. Yeah, but I think, but again, that's not currently the policy of the town. The town certainly has the right via Board of Health to do that, they haven't, but I didn't want anyone to feel like that's not even a potential.
It's still up to the town discretion to make that.
At that point, it's the town discretion. The state, though, will not be coming down and saying, you have to, because they're feeling like, you're covered, you got the watershed permit, assuming that comes through, you're covered, you're good, execute your, your plan, the CWMP, and you're good.
And so that watershed permit would also cover areas on this map that are not planned to be seared, responsible or something.
Correct. We're going for the entire town. We're saying, look, we have looked at the nitrogen problem in the entire town, this plan addresses the nitrogen problem in the entire town, as you DEP outlined it through your TMDLs. We want a permit on the entire town so that the town has some assurance that this is where our investments should be going. And DEP has said from the beginning, when they got into this, they knew Barnstable was ahead of the game. They actually, one meeting said, look, we were the example for a number of communities, and they didn't want to do any, well, our big message then was, don't get in our way. You know, we're moving, we have impetus, we have a community that's behind us, we have a political leadership that's driving this forward, don't stop us. And they understood that, they heard that, and they're trying to do everything they can to accommodate that. So thus, my expectation is they'll approve the watershed permit and we'll move forward.
You know, we use probably as a model to other towns on Cape or.
They said that we have been, I don't know that firsthand, I've been told that.
Yeah, just speaking about the Cape as a whole, it sounds like Barnstable has taken the lead. We talked a little bit about Mashpee and Sandwich, which I know you've said are in the process. Yarmouth, anything you can share about Yarmouth?
Yarmouth's moving along, they just approved a plant, they're starting to move forward with their efforts on their plant. They had a, they had a delay, it was a decade ago, where they went up for a vote and it got voted down, and unfortunately, the DPW director at the time, God rest his soul, said, I'm never bringing another thing forward again, because he got beat up pretty good in the process of that.
Understood. Yeah, I noticed Lewis Bay and Yarmouth, you know, I saw 100%, 100%, so certainly, it's a collective thing here.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is, what we can control, we are controlling.
Understood.
And what we can handle, we are handling. And, and frankly, a number of our watersheds in the middle are all us.
Right.
And so that's all us. And so that's all us. I mean, there's a little bit of Three Bays that's sandwiched at the top. We're having conversations with them about nitrogen training, if they want to buy a project down our way. Because their travel times through Three Bays is extensive. It's on the order of like 60 to 100 years of travel time.
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's, it's rather ironic. So the, the new regs came out, and basically what it, what it says is, if, if you don't get an approved water management plan, you've got five years to get your stuff straight. But if you do, then you've got 10 to 30 years. And right now, that means that the non-compliant will be putting in at minimum IA systems, if not sewer-ing. And the compliant ones will still, unless there is local legislation, then the, the compliant ones will have another 10, 20, 30 years to put in, continue to use Title V or whatever, unless we impose some kind of.
So there's a nuance, Ray, there's a nuance in that, though, I want to make sure everyone understands.
Yeah.
And one of the things, when we first had conversations with the state, that we started talking about is that, look, just because you put an IA system everywhere, doesn't mean you're gonna achieve your TMDLs. And there was a pause. You know, what we have shown is if we IA the entire Three Bay system, we will not achieve the TMDL limit. So, so they, they have to tolerate the, the more traditional approaches in some places, because I can't get 100% of the nitrogen out if I put an IA system in. Even if it achieves three, five, you name the number, it's more than zero.
And it doesn't do so well with phosphorus either.
And it doesn't deal phosphorus, and who knows what happens with PFOS, and who knows what happens with the emerging contaminants of concern. Whereas if I bring it back here, I can deal with it back here on a macro level and get economies of scale as I'm doing it. So, so that's kind of a, I understand what you're saying, but there's an acknowledgement, DEP has come to acknowledge the fact that the, the solution they're proposing with going to IA systems is not, it's not a silver bullet in every situation. There are areas where that won't get it done. There's other areas it will, but not particularly that one.
Seems like more of a Band-Aid for a much larger problem.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
Yeah, I mean, what, what they're trying to do is, is my understanding is saying, look, we, if you're gonna try to, to your point, kick the can down the road, you can't just keep doing what you're doing, you know? And then to communities like ours, who are being proactive and are getting out in front of this thing, keep going. You know, we're, we're, I mean, literally, Project One is about done, and we're gonna start hooking people up next spring? You know, so the first project is not only been planned, designed, it's in the ground. And we're gonna start bringing people back to the plan already.
Can I, I have a question on that.
Mary, go ahead.
Thanks for the information on that. I didn't know if the emerging concern, contaminants of emerging concern were actually going to be required in the IA systems, but apparently they're not.
No, so they're, at this point in time, they're not regulated, so they're not required by anything.
Right.
We're looking at it from the plant's perspective to say, if it goes this way, you know, we're getting some indication that PFOS may go this way. And what we have seen is that the plant doesn't generate PFOS, it just transmits it. So it comes out of the water systems, because it comes from all of us in the ground, and then it comes to the plant. The thing that we've done to lower PFOS in our plant is we basically started treating all of our wellheads in Hyannis. Once we started doing that, the PFOS dropped significantly. But regardless, if they all of a sudden say, look, we're gonna start requiring treatment on PFOS, then we have come up with technical solutions to deal with that at the plant. I can't do that at each individual home.
Okay, that was my first question. Second question is, and I apologize if this is already answered in your website, it may be. In P-Town, they did not require individuals to connect, it was a choice? What is, what's the plan gonna be for here?
So that is a policy question? The policy question is, I understand it's being currently discussed at the Board of Health. And I think there's some conversations between Board of Health and Town Council on that. We have made recommendations on that, but we are the technical agency. We don't get to say that.
And just to clarify, a property is assessed if it's eligible, not if it chooses?
Again, I'll refer you to my good friend Mark Millen on that.
Sounds like a key question, all right.
One thing, you talk about these nitrogen swaps and how they'd work with other towns. How do those work? Is that a?
So the way, so the way that would work is, and a lot of this deals with attenuation and things of that nature, but, but on, on a very lo, high level, it would say, look, by the plan, I need to remove, I'm gonna use a 10 kilograms a year of nitrogen. I can do that where I am, and actually probably have to remove more, because by the time it gets the embayment, it's gone through a number of ponds, so it's attenuated some, so I actually have to remove more up here to get 10 down there, which is where I need it. Or I can come to you, Tim, my neighbor, in the neighboring community, and I can pay you to do an additional project down low that you weren't planning on doing, that's closer to the source, or closer to the Sentinel Station. And in that, I will achieve that removal of 10 kilograms of nitrogen at a much cheaper cost to me. It helps you do more, it's probably better for the estuary anyways, because it's closer to it, et cetera. That's, that's the broad theory. Now, the application of that, it's not necessarily that, that, that easy.
Yeah, so an example, I mean, again, broad, general here, Sandwich is sewer-ing something, or is that Sandwich or Mashpee that's on Santuah Pond? You can say, let's pick up 10 additional residential lots or something, that will carry, that will cover us.
And initially, that's what we were gonna do on the Shoestring Bay side for Poppiness Bay. We were talking about doing nitrogen trading for our 9% and buying projects in Mashpee. It was then that Gary came to me and said, look, you need to start to think seriously about Shoestring Bay unto itself. We've got a problem, and if you trade away those nitrogen credits, it's not gonna solve our problem. And that's when we shifted back to the stages and shifted based on his input. So does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else I can answer while I've got the map up before I let Kelly continue?
I just, I guess I wanted to just ask a, a bottom line question then, in terms of time. So, so when is anything gonna happen that regarding Shoestring Bay?
So my, my expectation is between years 10 and 20. Well, you know, once we get out there on 28, when we're a couple of years away from being there, we can actually start the work in terms of sewer-ing, so that we can meet up and start to work the sewer in Katuut. And so year 10 to, you know, somewhere in that year 10 to 20 range is when we're gonna get there and pull the plug on it.
And, and in the interim, I mean, no kidding, that we.
No, no, I understand.
Something needs to be done like tomorrow.
Yeah, and so, and that's why, in talking to people around Shoestring Bay that are concerned about it, the, the best I can offer, or the best that we can offer, is to start to look at this hybrid policy, which is probably gonna go that way anyways, potentially. But if we could get that, if we can get it generally approved, because Board of Health has said they will not mandate a septic system that's not generally approved by DEP. So if we can get a generally approved septic system online, that achieves a nitrogen removal, so we're getting down to the three to five, you know, that, that ballpark milligrams per liter. We then can do the modeling to say, how much of that can we tolerate in addition to, and start doing some of those kinds of things. The conversation came up recently, because there was somebody that lived on Shoestring Bay, said, hey, my neighbor just put in a Title V again, why were they allowed to do that?
There's a guy up the street that's building a great big huge house.
Yeah.
And the lot's been sitting empty, because they were waiting for the regulations.
Right.
And now they've started again, and I'm curious to see, because there's, it all, it's still, it's Title V.
Yeah, no, I, I, I got it.
Yeah.
I mean.
So the answer is, it's still Title V until it's not.
It's still Title V until we get a generally approved system that Board of Health feels comfortable mandating, and then we can start to build those into the plan as a mandated system.
Is there any sort of timeline on that?
What's, I'm sorry.
Any sort of timeline on that? When they expect to have a generally approved?
So DEP's got a three-year trial period, and wants to see data over a three-year period. There's been a number of entities that are debating that with DEP, and the value of that with DEP, we'll see where that ends up. Now, all of this does not stop, Ray, as an example, from saying, I am going to change my Title V out to an IA system tomorrow, and going to Board of Health and asking to do that. They'll allow you to do that. They just won't mandate you do that.
Right, what, what.
You can selectively choose, yeah.
You can selectively choose.
What I'd like to see is, at, at minimum, is any, any property that changes hands, any new construction. I, I think the regulations, no, but it's still, it's still Title V. The new regulations say if it's new construction, you have to meet DEP guidelines, but they're still.
Right, but once you're underneath the watershed permit, that doesn't count.
Right.
So, so.
Right.
We're, we're in a little bit of a limbo right now.
Right, so you're in a little bit of a limbo right now, but so the conversation needs to happen, sorry, go ahead, Mary.
The town can do that.
Right, exactly.
The town, just the same way we went from cesspools to Title V, to septic systems, right? It was the transfer of property, new development, whatever that was.
Hide, hide permits, yeah.
Right, it was, it's the same process.
And is that zoning or general ordinance?
Now, what's your, what's.
Mass state law.
What your fellow board has said, which is the Board of Health that has the jurisdiction in this area, what they have said is, we are not comfortable mandating a septic system that's not generally approved by DEP on anybody, because if it doesn't work, and we've mandated on them, you know, that, and I understand their rationale, and I understand their reasoning. So they're waiting for, to mandate, they're waiting for generally approved systems from DEP. The only generally approved systems currently of DEP are 19 milligram per liter systems, they're not worth doing that with.
Yeah, so the jump, I'm gonna answer something that probably Rob will clean up my answer on. There's different septic systems, there's Title V system, which is your standard, you know, state-approved system, has a lot of tight guidelines. You can go to your local Board of Health for variances. IA stands for Innovative Alternative.
Innovative Alternative.
Which, or sorry, actually, just start up the rung of probably, you start with an experimental system. That is, somebody comes up with this new scheme of how do we take nitrogen out. There are different systems out there, at different stages of that. So those are experimental systems, and they're, they're just that. Currently, I think you have to go to the Board of Health to get a variance to be able to use one. You'd have to get permission to say, hey, I'm gonna try this out over here. And then there's IA systems, which have a little bit more traction than experimental, but they're not approved for general.
So wait a minute, so IA systems is a broad category, which some are generally approved, but they're only approved at 19 milligrams per liter right now. There's new technologies, so what, what you're going through is there's, there's experimental systems, provisional systems, where DEP has said, look, we'll let you provisionally put in certain number of them. We want to see 60 of them over a three-year period and see the data from that, et cetera. That's currently what's going on. Barnstable Clean Water Coalition, who some of you may know of, is really running an effort on that currently.
Yeah, they're doing an experiment in Labor Hoods in Marcus Mills or something.
Yep, they are, they're doing a great job doing that. They're working hard with EPA on that, they're doing some groundwater monitoring, too. Working principally to get that number up, and get to the point where we can get DEP, or they can get DEP to say, yes, this is generally approved. That then kicks a whole lot of things into gear. Once it's generally approved, now, what Board of Health has said in the past, and I don't want to, I can't speak for them today, but my past conversations with them, was, once they have a generally approved system, then they're at least more comfortable with mandating a system swap, which they're not willing to do until they have a generally approved system in front of them. That doesn't stop somebody from going in, and a number of people have, and saying, I want to, because it's the right thing to do, change out my Title V system, or my Title V system is dying anyways, and I want to put an IA system in, and coming in front of the Board of Health and having that conversation, and generally, is, to the best of my knowledge, they've been approving those. Witness the ones and, you know, witness the, the test ones. But what they're not willing to do right now is say, Stephen, you gotta take out your Title V and put in an IA system.
So, so what we, we're faced here is a tension between, if you will, our, our technical staff, and then the political part. You know, I come from DC, gotta find a, and what, what I'm, and you've been very helpful, because the idea, the, the challenge here is to find the, the set, political center of gravity, the, the leverage point to say. The town council basically says, you know, I, we hear you, Department of Health, you're not comfortable, and unless they get the, and we're gonna have to wait three years, but we can't wait three years. So we're gonna say, this is what we're gonna do, whether it's, you know, the IA, or there's no more Title V. No Title V, it's gonna be IA or experimental, whatever it is, and it's gonna be a, a function of political, rather than technical, because the staff is just gonna do what they're gonna do, and they, if it's not approved, it's not approved. And there has to be maybe some risk-taking in the political leadership.
What, what would that look like, though, if Town Council did decide that?
Well, I was, I was gonna say, one thing about this is like, there's not like one IA system, it's not a kind of standard design. There's, there's different brands, different types, different ones, some's have pros, some's have cons. So there's, I think FAST, the FAST system is one of the earlier on IA, IA systems that's been pretty common here in the Cape. There's, I think, I forget, there's, there's all, there's a.
Smart guys that run with, with Rob.
So, so my, so my encouragement is this, as much as we all want to fix the problem yesterday, what I would encourage everyone to take a look at is the problem, we are actively working this issue on many, many fronts. Barnstable Clean Water Coalition is really pushing, I mean, I talk to, to one of your neighbors all the time on Shoestring Bay about this issue. He's in touch with DEP, to the point where I'm swimming there blocking him from calling them anymore. And I mean that in all good sense, I think the world of this person, but, but he's passionate about it, and he's, he's working the issue. I think what needs to happen is it's gotta play. It's gonna play out. You know, we're, we're probably a year and a half into those tests. You know, by the time we were able to jump up and down and cause a political issue, you'd probably be at the three-year point anyways. I think a more relevant conversation is to say, when one gets approved, how do we want to be positioned so that when that gets approved, we can now move forward? What, what do we want to do to move forward, and what does that look like? Because everything we're talking about involves cost to somebody. You know, and so it's easy, I, I've been in, I was in Katuut, actually. We did a village association talk on wastewater in Katuut, and, and everybody was, you know, very, very enthusiastic, and why aren't we doing this tomorrow, and all this other stuff. And then we all had to stop and pause and say, well, wait a minute, this is a priority for you that live literally within a mile of the water, but if you come up into Hyannis, the priority is, okay, I need to get my kids to school, and my transmission just died in my car, and, you know, there's just different priorities. And it's the balance, I mean, that's what a community is, right? It's the balance of all those things. And so I think where the effort is best expended, and again, I'm just a technical guy. But my, my argument would be that where the effort's best expended is, what do we do when it happens, versus beating our heads against the fact it hasn't happened yet? What do we do when it happens, so that when that comes forward, and we now have a generally approved IA system, what is the town going to do with that information? Is the town going to allow Title V's? Is it not? Where is it is going to do it? Where would it not? Is it going to make everyone change immediately, or is it gonna change, as Mary talked about, on sort of natural data points, i.e. sale of homes or failure of systems? You know, those kinds of conversations and those kinds of discussions, and positioning the town for success when that happens, I think is where the effort is best expended at this point. But again, I'm an engineer, I'm a technical guy. The, the political realm, I will leave to you, Ray.
Well, I, I just would like to say that affecting a, a political solution does not necessarily involve jumping up and down, just so you know. And it, it can be a measured and disciplined exercise, and basically, that's what our whole system is about. And if it's a priority, and it's important, and our political representatives hear it and, and move on it, that's one thing. If they hear it and they don't move on it, then maybe they don't get elected again. So that's, that's, you know, the miracle of democracy.
Cool.
I have one, just sorry, one last question. Generally on IA systems, experimental, all these kind of new-fangled septic systems, are there ones available for large-flow properties, high-density residential development? Or does that kind of go more to like an onsite treatment for cell?
So you get above 10,000 gallons a day, you start to go more to onsite. You get, you get a groundwater discharge permit, and you start to get to there. So.
So most of these are probably single-family, dual-class, maybe quad.
There's certainly bigger ones, and there's cluster ones, and the technology can be scaled to some extent. My encouragement would be, if that's gonna happen, wait for me to get there with a sewer. Because I can deal with a whole lot of issues at that point in time. I know there's a piece of property out on 28 that Jim's been thinking about a little bit and stuff, you know, let, let me get there, let me get there, and I can solve a whole lot of those problems really quickly.
Yeah, and also, I mean, just touching on this a little bit, too, so generally, if there is a groundwater discharge permit or a small sewer treatment plant, I call them, I'm assuming they can't get the same efficiencies and the same load limits down that you'll be able to.
Not that I've seen.
At a big massive one.
No, not that I've seen, nor, nor the, the range of constituents that, that we can deal with.
So I got, I, I do have another question in terms of coordination and stuff. So, Katuut and other places, they have fire districts, you know, this, it's the lowest common denominator as, with taxing authority. So the Katuut Fire District also owns the Katuut Water Department. And we were in the process of, there's a property, the Katuut Elementary School site, which is in the process of being transferred from the town to the village, to the village, to the fire district. And 800 feet from the school building is the wellhead for the water that we drink in Katuut. And I know that this is a wastewater management plan, but I, I think it's, it all ties into water, because wastewater ends up, hopefully, going back into the water supply, and ultimately, may end up, we may end up drinking it sometime. So how, how, how or do you, do you work with the, the fire slash water departments for the, you know, these sub-sub-sub, very independent, I, I just got another education about, wouldn't you come in here and tell us how, this is the way we do it? And so I'm, I'm interested to see how.
So the presentation that I gave before we came over to this, this presentation, that drove Sarah, our lovely Sarah, nuts, because it's on the old format. I stole that from the presentation I gave to the fire chiefs back in 2021. So I've spent some time talking to them, I also talked to some of the water district people, I'm talking to one particularly in Katuut. So one of the commissioners that are there and stuff, and, yeah, we'll have a conversation with anybody at any time on, on, on this topic matter.
So, so for example, just as a microcosm, Mr. Chair, at the water district, sometimes I, I'm, I'm just impressed, we got a lot of money, because from the lowest level to the, the municipal, even the state level, I find that people around here spend money like. I find that people around here spend money like drunken sailors. And the Ktuit Water Department has proposed that the upstream, come on, help me with this, that feed our wellheads are, because they're up, they're near some of the stuff by Santa Wipon.
Yeah, the water guy's called, I think it's Up Radiant, that's the thing. Yeah, or Upgradian, sorry.
Upgradian, thank you. And so they're proposing to subsidize the people that live in that area to upgrade their septic systems to kind of preempt the effluent that's coming from them or from their neighbors to, so that, so it doesn't have to be treated at the wellhead. And is that something that you work with, that you...
So I've had a conversation, that's the commissioner I spoke with about. We were speaking about that topic. Hyannis has chosen to go a different direction, so we are treating at the wellhead with the Hyannis Water District, principally because PFOS drove us to that. Well, we were treating there anyways in a number of places, but PFOS certainly drove us to the rest of it. And you'll notice that we've put in one plant. We're now designing another one, you know. We've crossed that threshold, and we're now treating at wellheads. Because we can't control all the environmental impacts that are coming at the wells. But we do need clean water. So that's why we're doing that. I won't speak for the Ktuit Water District. I just, I've had, yes, the answer to your question is yes. I've had conversations with them about it. I've had conversations about how this plan might fit with that, or what they're doing in relationship to this plan. I'll let you speak with them about what their conclusions are from those conversations.
But in terms of an overall plan, and again, I see it as a water management plan, not just wastewater. I mean, how does that, doesn't that complicate your job in terms of trying to pull all the things together?
Yeah, it does, because we've got five different water, five different water purveyors inside one town.
Right.
Five water districts, five different supply systems.
And five different priorities and five different ways they think about it, and, you know, all that other stuff. So yeah, we've had conversations with all of them at one point or another, and still have conversations with them to this day. Even things like what Kelly deals with on the construction front, you know, where, you know, particularly as we start moving west, we're no longer affecting Hyannis's water system pipes in the streets that we're replacing. We're now in Com Water District pipes that we're replacing in the street. And we don't have control over those. So we're having to talk to Com and have Com talk to contractors and start to figure out, okay, what pipes need to be replaced, what pipes don't, because we're affecting them, et cetera. So yeah, there's a lot of conversation that has to go on between them, and it does cause complication. But it's the cards we're dealt, and that's what we deal with.
My hat's off to you. And just for grins, let's just throw in the wind energy.
I was just going to bring that up.
Then, Mr. Chairman, I will defend you.
Well, I mean, all I was going to say is, go ahead.
I have one question to jump in before that one. It's kind of relative to, well, we're talking about water departments and everything.
Jim, I told you it would be long beyond an hour.
Yeah. So generally, I mean, I know the biggest issue with the nitrogen is the saltwater and the estuaries. I know, does it have an effect, what effect does it have on our groundwater in recharging our lenses that we're pulling from? And is there any issues pulling water from, you know, wastewater from Ktuit, and it's being put into Hyannis? How does that refeed where they're pulling from in Ktuit?
We get forty-some-odd inches of rain a year. So that issue is more, as I understand the question you're asking me, that issue is more dramatic in other places. There was at one point in time, DEP was really very sensitive about moving water out of watersheds and in other watersheds and so of that nature. The reality is, it's probably not that much of an issue. And we've pretty much shown that. So at this point in time, trying to think what I can actually share on this, because there's a lot of stuff we're working on on the effluent front that's pretty interesting, cool stuff, but it's not ready for public consumption. At this point in time, it's not, it's not an issue that's causing concern.
At this point in time, it's not a concern, and there's some new stuff coming up.
Yep. Yeah, we're constantly working, we're working the effluent issue and working that hard.
All I was going to say is, it doesn't seem like there's a priority to just dig one hole and be done with it, meaning there's one transmission cable. I think that's been done.
Oh, for the wind?
Oh, the wind thing?
Yeah, you're talking about wind, you're talking about sewer, you're talking about, you know, all this.
We're hitting all the stuff.
I've heard rumors that they're supposed to be using the same hole for the, both the sewers and the cables.
Well...
At least until I heard. Is that urban myth?
But if you look at some of these projects, they're going to dig a hole, they're going to bury a cable, they're going to pave it, and then they're going to come back, they're going to dig a hole, they're going to do sewer, they're going to pave it, and then they're going to come back and dig a hole.
Nope, nope. All right, let me back up. There we, so, all right.
I just want to preface his comments with...
You've got another half hour on this one, here.
Sewer is the most difficult, having installed sewer infrastructure in this town, over in Hyannisport, we did a thousand-feet extension for sewer main, gravity main, and we did a forced main from a property we're working on up to it and all that. It is the most difficult infrastructure to install, because it's gravity, and it's extremely sensitive to exactly how it's installed in that trenching and everything else.
So when the wind projects came into town, one of the things we said with DPW is, we started looking at what they were going to do, is that we needed to get sewer in the streets before they came through. Two reasons. One, isn't it going to make a mess? But two, is if you look at those duckbanks, they have long sweeps through corners. And if by the time they go through, there'll be nothing left, there'll be no room left for us to snake in and around. They'll basically chew up all the utility corners, if you know what I mean by that. So we said, "Look, we want to go first. You guys can handle the paving and that stuff." So the way Vineyard Wind worked with the project that's just finished, we went first. They came behind us. They're responsible for paving the roads. That's how, it's not us, not them, then us, and all that stuff. So the sequencing of the work is going sewer, duckbank, well, sewer, any other utilities they got to fix and figure out as long as they go, duckbank, pave, done. That is the expectation for two potential subsequent projects as well. There is some conversation about having them manage both the sewer installation and the duckbank installation, not in the same hole, but by the same contractor, so, because you can eliminate contractors pointing fingers at each other and claiming one problem's the other and that kind of thing. That's still a conversation, best I know. But there is no expectation for putting it into the exact same hole sewer and duckbank, and there's no, the sequencing you described, Mr. Chair, is not the sequencing as I understand it or you understand it.
That's great. That's good. It's good to hear. Okay, what else do we have?
All right, so we still got to finish this presentation. So, any, so last, any other question?
Jeez, jeez, Kelly, you're really long-winded.
Do you want to talk about the Red Sox? Because Chris Sale's pitching tonight. By now, he's probably done. Anything else on the maps or anything else on the phasing before we get off this page? All right, and I'll leave it to Kelly, who's been just dominating the mic this whole time.
We'll leave this tab open just in case. But honestly, the questions you've had regarding the wind projects, but also even just the westward expansion, can be answered in a little bit more visual way when we actually look at the Phase One project. So as we talked about, three 10-year phases. We're in almost year two, or just about year two of this first 10-year phase. This is essentially our Phase One, oh, I should probably open the right one. This is essentially our first 10 years. So as Rob pointed out, we have the first project, which is, hopefully you can see it a little bit better on your screen, but this yellow here, which is what we're calling the Strawberry Hill Road project. If you've driven down Finney's Lane, you're well aware of the work that's gone on there. That was sequenced in coordination with Vineyard Wind. And we're effectively wrapping up that project. To Rob's point, you know, there's still obviously the final restoration, which Vineyard Wind owns, which will be the curb-to-curb repaving, and that will happen after some testing along the project route this fall. And then we expect, or I should say, we anticipate first connections for portions of this project to occur this coming spring 2024. Then we have the Route 28 East project, which is still actively in construction. Will be back in the roadway following the Labor Day holiday. This does have a portion of Finney's Lane, what I call sort of the portion from about Quocket Lane to Route 28. We had some off-road work that also was occurring this past summer in front of the Burnstable Intermediate School and also cross-country at the Water Pollution Control Facility. And then we will also be using this as basically a jumping-off point to continue that westward expansion. And you'll see this dark red area here is Route 28 West. So this sort of, ram into the earlier conversations, does talk a bit about how we are going to get out there to further sewer-ing as part of Phase Two. We also have, as Rob pointed out, the potential for some other wind projects, the first being the Park City Wind project. We anticipate our sewer expansion for what we're calling the Centerville Village Sewer Expansion Project, this dark purple that runs effectively from about Kovels all the way up Main Street, Centerville, Shoot Flying Hill, Old Stage, Shoot Flying Hill. We anticipate sequencing that project similarly to how we did with Vineyard Wind. And then the next project that I would say is probably closest in terms of design would be the Finney's Lane Neighborhood Project. So that's that sort of washed-out light purple here. And that will effectively allow us to expand into the neighborhoods on the east and west side, building off of the infrastructure that was installed as part of Strawberry Hill Road. So this really paints a very nice picture of what the next, you know, eight and a half years are going to look like in terms of sewer projects. This is just the color-coded map. If we go back to the Phase One page, you know, any user of the site can sort of navigate down and then see the anticipated timeline or our anticipated implementation schedule. So this is where, if you were to call and say, "I looked at my property on the assessor's database. I see I'm in Phase One. I'm calling DPW. You effectively will connect with me, and I can tell you what project you're in based off of our internal GS data system." From there, I can give you an anticipated timeframe of when you may expect sewer. Again, the plan itself and this timeline is adaptive, like the CWMP as a whole, but this does give you a really good idea, and our residents, our property owners, a good idea of if they're in this first phase, approximately when they may anticipate connecting to sewer. So you'll also see here preliminary survey, design in blue, and then red is that active construction. In any given year, we'll have, what, potentially, three, six projects in any given year ongoing at once? So, you know, right now, again, wrapping up Strawberry Hill Road, we have active construction with Route 28 East, and then the next project we foresee would be Centerville Village, which would be in coordination with Park City Wind.
This is very impressive, by the way. Definitely. Yeah, I'm a visual person, and this is very helpful. One quick question. Use, you know, the old Yarmouth, old Yarmouth Road, you know, it shows 26, 27, but obviously, we have a huge construction project going on at the intersection of 28 and Willow Street. When a project like that happens, I understand that you ask the contractor to put the infrastructure in the ground. Is that correct? So that it doesn't have to be dug up again?
Yeah, so that's a state project that's going on there, but we went through with them and said, "Look, we're going to come behind you and do other work further upstream from you, but could you put in piping while we're here, while you're here?"
Get the mains in and get the...
They did that. So through the intersection, they've done all that stuff.
Where is that?
Willow Street and...
Willow Street and 28.
Oh, the Willow Street.
Where Cam came down, yeah, so...
Where the railroad tracks are, where Cam was.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, so, you know, as we noted, you can walk through the Phase One projects, get a sense for the timeline. We also have an active project, sort of breakdown here down below the fold, where you can click into each individual project. And as we are preparing for a new construction season, we'll be posting regular updates. So you'll see, obviously, some of these projects that are in active construction have much more content associated with them. And as you get deeper into the projects, you can see sort of, you know, the project summary and where they may be. For example, Shoot Flying Hill is in preliminary survey right now. So there's a wealth of information on the project page. And like I said, you can click into the individual projects to get a better sense. And then, for the most part, every landing page ends with our recent news, and in some cases, even our FAQs. So are there any questions while we're on this page for either myself or Rob regarding the projects in Phase One?
Any questions?
On the Phase One projects?
Phase One projects, questions? No, let's continue on.
So aside from that, I mean, we certainly don't have to walk through all the internal pages, but to give you an idea of what we do have out there for the public, we have a sewer connection page where we boil down what we're effectively calling the Eight Steps for Sewer Connection. The first would be to complete a sewer connection form. What this actually is, is part of our outreach that happens prior to any construction happening in the roadway. So especially now that I'm here on board, you know, working with our team, our engineering and construction management team, we will go out to property owners typically about nine months before construction, and we'll start with a printed mailer and also some door-to-door outreach, where we give property owners the opportunity to opine on generally where on their property they would potentially like to see their sewer service stub. So to clarify, the town installs sewer within the roadway. We leave a sewer service stub or a sewer lateral at the property line. So we are not installing on private property by any means. Everything we're doing is within the roadway and within the right-of-way. That sewer connection form gives a property owner the opportunity to say, "Hey, town, it's me, property owner. This is a very amateur sketch of my property. This is essentially where I believe my septic system is located, where I believe the plumbing exits my home. Here's some landscaping. I really don't want you to disturb, and this is where I plan to potentially add on a new deck." And using all of that information, that helps us to, helps guide our team in the design process to make a educated decision as to where to leave that sewer service lateral in the right-of-way. From there, the town construction will actually happen, the sewer construction. As you saw on the Gantt chart, for lack of better terms, you know, anywhere from two to three, some projects up to four years of construction. Doesn't mean that's happening all on one roadway. This is across the entire project. And as you saw on the project map, there's some very large projects. So the town construction will actually happen within the roadway. And then after all of that is done, the curb-to-curb repaving, the restoration of the roadway has occurred, we effectively will hand that project over to the Department of Health, the Board of Health, to then order the connection. From there, step four is essentially where the property owner's responsibility comes into play. They will be responsible for hiring a licensed sewer installer, in which we have a database of probably, I would say, at least thirty, if not more, licensed sewer installers that we have vetted. We'll continue to add to that list as projects progress. You will hire a licensed sewer installer who will effectively design the plan for connecting the property, the building on your property, to the sewer service lateral left in the right-of-way. The residential construction occurs. That's where, when we talked about costs earlier, the connection cost would come into play, whatever you're quoted from your licensed sewer installer. There's an inspection process where a DPW inspector will come and sign off on the completed connection, which generates a tie card and effectively tells the Water Pollution Control Facility you're ready for billing. Septic abandonment is also in there. This is also governed by the Board of Health. They will make recommendations on what a property owner must do to abandon their septic system. And generally, that is typically part of the actual residential construction process. So more often than not, that licensed sewer installer, which is hired by the property owner, will help with the septic abandonment. And then the utility billing. Property owners will be charged their sewer service based off of water usage. And yes, if there is irrigation on site, you can have a meter deducted, a meter installed to deduct from your water usage. And then you'll be billed as part of your water bill, which is, we're anticipating about a hundred dollars a quarter to upwards four hundred or so dollars a year. That's essentially the process. Obviously, there's a lot more detail behind it than that, but in trying to make this easily digestible for residents, we wanted to give a visual way of understanding what that timeline's going to look like from breaking ground to actually connecting to sewer.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Is this live?
Yes, this website is live.
So I guess then it comes back to the question, what I had said, asked before, which is, does the property owner have to do this?
Yeah, that's a complicated answer.
That's the million-dollar question.
As we both moved our mugs at once. That's a policy question. From my perspective as a technical person, not the policy person, we need people to do this because otherwise, we're not going to get nitrogen out of the system.
I would agree. We've seen what happened in P-Town when they didn't require.
Right. I think that's still being discussed at the policy level in terms of not only is it required, but the timing of requirement, how much time they have in things and stuff. So I would stay tuned on that. There will be guidance forthcoming.
Okay. I have two quick questions. Sorry, I'll go real quick. Number five, the residential construction. Any sort of a range for a typical? No? Okay.
The reason why is because every home, we always get in trouble when we say, "The range will be A to B."
Yeah.
And inevitably, somebody has a home which is just really geographical, you know. Tim, you know, you install sewer, you know. All of a sudden, it's a Z.
We're down a hill, it's like a pond, you're pumping it up.
Exactly. And they're like, "Well, you said A to B, and this is like Z." That's why we try to stay away from quoting connection cost.
Is there an instance where a home may be so lay, you know, kind of low-lying, low-laying, that it needs its own pump to pump it to the street?
Yep.
And that would be located within the home or just outside?
So that can happen one of two ways. They're called E1 pump stations. I actually had a picture of it in the other presentation. They can either be in a small little wet well that's out in front of your house with an E1 pump station in it. E1 pump station in it, or they can be within your home with a small little, it looks like a big gray tote. One has more capacity for water during a power outage than the other, which is kind of the thinking that goes into that.
That makes sense.
But yeah, there are homes that would potentially require an E1 pump station. Basically, they're called grinder pumps. We traditionally use the company E1, so.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And last question. The billing, does that cover 100% of the operational cost of the treatment plant?
So I understand your question. So not 100% of the capital cost of the installation, but yes, the treatment plant's operation.
Operational.
They come through every year and they have a survey done of their plant and their operations and their expectation, expecta, I can talk if I try, their expected operations, and come up with a billing rate from that. So yes, it does.
So they're self-sustaining and...
Yeah, they're an Aqua Fund. They have to live within their own, they have to live within their own billing and their own means.
So I have some questions kind of pertinent to, you know, this board zoning, planning, long-term, and you touched on a few of them.
Before we get to that, any more you want to hit?
No, I mean, I think ultimately you can certainly walk through and look at the anticipated costs, FAQs, news and updates. I mean, essentially, I think the most important things, we're looking at the Phase One projects, which we just looked at.
So that was, that was one thing I was going to ask, is that, and I've seen things floating around, but at this point, are you aware of any financial incentives, subsidies, you know, money being pulled out of whatever hats somewhere along the line to support the, I don't know if there'd be a needs test or whatever it is, but to, if we're in right now, the, I either choose to or not choose to, you know, there's people with limited incomes, there's et cetera, et cetera. Is there any kind of incentives to pay for it?
So what I would encourage you to do, you've had a number of questions tonight about finance. I would really encourage you to invite Mark in to have you, have you guys talk to him about those sorts of things, because I could very quickly get on thin ice in terms of financial policy. The county loan program is always there, and that is, that is a benefit to individuals in terms of low-interest loans to fund septic system installations, things of that nature. But anything beyond that, I would, I would encourage you to talk to Mark Milne about. He's more tapped in on the financial side in terms of what the different issues are and frankly, the policy discussions, which I'm not pervy to, that are happening at the town council level regarding things such as that.
And then just...
And I'm not trying to put you off. I just, I just don't want to give you a bad scoop.
Just to add, which I know wasn't technically your question, but for property owners who may have questions about costs or financial support, we do list what, what we know of being available right now. So Rob touched upon the Aqua Fund. Cape Cod Five also has a sewer-water connection loan program. So as we learn of more financial, you know, support opportunities for property owners for the connection costs, we'll, we'll be adding them to the site.
So any more questions on the website or the communications plan? Because I'm going to come back to you, Tim. I'm not blowing you off.
I do have a question on the website.
Yep.
Early on, one of the first slides that you showed was around the same time you and I had the discussion about the white areas on the map.
Yep.
One of the slides had the town broken into watershed areas and a calculation as to what percentage of the nitrogen had to be removed. Is that slide on the webpage?
Do you have that on your webpage?
That's, that slide itself isn't, but I'm, I'm probably, can probably say it's in the CWMP. If it's not, we can certainly add it. I mean, we have a document section as well to the website. So one thing that is on the website is the entire CWMP is easily downloadable, whether from... Yes. Yep. So you can download the CWMP, flip through the 50-some pages of narrative, plus all of the data and maps and various tables. So you can get that on the wastewater plan page as well as up in our, our library here under Documents. You can also get the annual report as well as some additional other regulatory documents.
I did spend some time going through all those. My particular interest is that one slide, because I get a lot of questions.
Yep.
And that one slide answers a lot of those questions.
I mean, the broader conversation on that slide is that it's a model run, and it's a way of achieving, it's the models-run way of achieving the, the levels we need to get to in the estuaries.
Right, I understand. But it also leads to the question of why large, large neighborhoods are in white?
Yep.
Because there's no need.
There was no need. There was nothing to drive it.
You know, if you talk to 100 people on the streets of Bonestable, 99 and a half of them have no concept of that. And I get questions like, like that.
Well, and that's why we want, you know, when Jim said, "Hey, look, can you guys come talk?", that, that's why when I started this, I said, "I want to have a conversation with you guys."
Sure. Let me ask you. If it's, if it's not on the website, could you send the slide to Jim so he can send it to me?
Yes, yes, we can. And also to that point, I mean, this is a living, breathing website. We've got 28-plus more years, and we only just made these redesign modifications over the last couple of months in prep for the fiscal year '23 annual report.
Talk about job security.
Yes, true.
Last year at this time, we hired Kelly.
Yes, yeah, it's been almost a year now. So that's something we can certainly add. One thing we didn't talk about is there is a link to water quality monitoring. Right now, that is very much focused on our ponds and lakes. So we have all of the most recent pond and lake management reports that have gone out, water quality alerts, everything you could possibly need to know about cyanobacteria. But we do plan on building out an estuary page as well, where we can house a lot of that information about the watersheds and then also update the community on our embankment monitoring.
So, and just a footstomp on that, Vice Chair, is that if there's things, as you guys are encountering the citizens of the town and knowing now that you know the website, that you feel there's a disconnect, let us know. You know, that, that's why, that's why we have somebody that's not an engineer running this thing, that's, you know, good at this stuff versus us. You know, talk to her. Let her, let her know what we need to be doing to communicate better, because that, that is the sole driver, that's the sole reason that, you know, Kelly is here, is to find a way to take us crusty, not necessarily good communicator, engineer types, and be able to convey what we say to everyone else in the world. Okay. Everybody else squared away so I can go back to Tim?
Yeah, go for it.
All right, Tim, thank you very much for your patience.
No problem. So I think the biggest question I had tonight, I have kind of two or three, but all generally around the same topic, is what is the amount of additional capacity being designed into the system and how is it being designed in?
So what we did is when we did the CWMP, we went through, so the CWMP is based on a lot-by-lot basis on water usage of those existing lots. So it's a real-time data that was used to design the flows that would be coming off those lots and nitrogen coming off those lots.
Was that actual flows or is that...
Actual flows.
Actual flow.
So we actually went through and got water data on each one of the homes, and then just made the assumption that 90% of that water goes into the sewer system, yada, yada, yada. So we did that. Then we went to planning and said, "Planning, we need to start to have a conversation about build-out and what build-out looks like." And they gave us the build-out look so that we could build that into it. And then in addition to it, back to Bob's question about that white area on each side, when Griffin and I were sitting down looking at planning it, saying, "Someday, someone's going to want to sewer that." And what will prevent that from happening is if the pipes in the road are just not big enough to convey all that wastewater. We can upgrade pump stations, we can upgrade treatment plants. It's really difficult to go back and replace all the pipes again. Let's make the pipe big enough to deal with that. So that's what we're doing. We're, we're putting the pipe in big enough so that the white areas, to your point, someday decide we want to come in, and the town decides it wants to do it. It won't be the pipes that stop it from happening. We'll have to upgrade the pump station, put bigger pumps in. We'll have to do, you know, that we can do. But it would be a reasonably, and I'm using air quotes for those that can't see me, a reasonably easier task to do that. So there's a couple layers of future expansion built into it. There's the build-out piece that was put in based on the conversation between DPW and planning and development. And then on top of that, on some of the pipe sizing, particularly on the main lines and some of the pipe sizing, we've gone even further because we're just trying to anticipate things that aren't necessarily build-out, but where the plan would fundamentally change because the town would do what Chatham did and just say, "Sewer everybody someday." Does that answer your question?
No, so that answers it. And I think what you're saying is the, the pipes, which is the limiting factor for the expansion, are being, are sized and spec'd up to a size that, if the whole town or of all these future areas, the pipes aren't going to be the problem.
Right. The pipes won't be the problem. We'll have to upgrade the pump station. I mean, as you know, if you look at a, if you look at a construct, a total comprehensive sewer job, it's traditionally about 30% of the cost is in the plant and 70% of the cost is in the collection system. So the collection system's where your real cost liability is in terms of upgrading. So we wanted to anticipate that ahead of time with, with Bob's point, that, that white area is sitting there, so obviously potentially coming in, and so that's why we did that.
Yeah, before you move on from this, I don't know, Jim, if you want to speak too, how was that build-out calculated?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's much like what, what Rob is talking about, going parcel by parcel, looking at what the zoning allows and, and looking at what full build-out could be anticipated for every single one of those lots. I know it was before my time, but planning, development, working with GIS to go through each parcel and seeing what's there and giving, you know, the best, best-case scenario as to, you know, what we could plan out for, for new growth.
With that being done, you know, say a few years ago, and then recently the form-based code changing to allow more dense projects, is that an issue, do you, do you think?
Yeah, actually, that's going to end up hitting my next point, yeah.
So it doesn't alter new growth in a, in a dramatic fashion as it's targeted to very specific area of downtown Hyannis, which already allowed for a significant amount of, of growth. I don't know if that changed any plans from the DPW side, but from planning and zoning.
No, and I think the broader point is that planning and DPW talk routinely. I mean, obviously, you know, we're not familiar necessarily with the fact that new growth has changed and that, but we're familiar with the technical side on sewer. Planning's familiar with that developer X wants to come into town, and, and so Elizabeth comes and talks over to, you know, to Griffin and, "Hey, this is what's going on, what can we do?", you know. So that conversation's happening routinely between the two departments to try to make sure we can accommodate as we go.
Yeah, I just wonder, is there somebody out there that's saying, what happens in, you could call it worst-case scenario, you could call it best-case scenario, where every single parcel is developed to its fullest, densest...
So when you look at, when you look at build-out, traditionally from, from an engineer's perspective, there's a couple different build-outs. There's theoretical build-out, which is every single parcel, to your point, every single parcel developed to its fullest potential. That's probably not realistic and is probably not fiscally realistic or fiscally responsible to build to that.
Sure.
You know, so then there's, what's the realistic build-out? And that's the conversation that we had back and forth with planning and development on, okay, we know theoretical, we can all sort of look and understand what theoretical is. The question, the real art is what is the realistic build-out that we need to anticipate and do we need to accommodate for? And then what's the contingency plans? So if all of a sudden downtown, I don't know, somebody comes in and puts on a high-rise building, which probably won't happen, but you know my point, can we accommodate and how do we accommodate? And we're doing things now to create more capacity in downtown on other projects just because we know it's a thing that we want to be doing.
Yeah, that's great.
So I, I don't know if there's a satisfying answer in the sense that the answer's 10, but I think the answer is that there's a running dialogue happening between planning and development and DPW to try to make sure that whatever growth you guys decide we want to have, we can technically accommodate. And at the end of the day, realistically, anything can happen, it's just money and time, right?
Sure.
I mean, at the worst-case scenario, it's money and time. So I think it's, it's a running conversation, what should give some satisfaction or some sense of comfort is, is a running conversation going back and forth in that the departments aren't operating in, in sort of black boxes and silos and not thinking what the other one's doing.
Yeah, that's good. And it's good to know that a margin, a factor was added on, so, okay.
Yeah, that's exactly, I was, was wondering about that. So I think your, your question is right on, because God forbid that we actually get serious about affordable, available housing, for example, that, for example, I just gave Jim a, a piece from the Sunday's New York Times about Montgomery County in Maryland, and they are, the county is the developer, and they, they're putting in a 400-unit, this is, they have, the county now has, owns and manages 1,900 separate properties, a significant percentage of, with say 30, 35% are income-adjusted affordable housing. And if we ever kicked it in, so I'm wondering, how much, how much wiggle room do you have? How big are, how big are the pipes? And, you know, how do you plan for that?
What we did is, what is the process we described? You know, we went through and said, "Okay, what's, what, that's the art, you know, what, what's realistic, what's going to be coming?" And then as we're thinking about it on the design side, how do we mitigate in case the whole white area all of a sudden decides to come in or something of that nature? Have we anticipated every potential outcome? Probably not. But what brings me comfort is the fact that we're talking a lot. And that we're here. I mean, witness the fact that, you know, we're here talking to you guys, and we'll come back as many times as needs to happen is to have these conversations.
Be careful what you ask for.
Are there any, I mean, I know, open dialogue, there's been a lot of overcapacity, and it seems like it was, it was come to in a very systematic way, which sounds good. I mean, are there any particular areas that are maybe, I don't want to say a, a weak chain in the link, or are there any maybe more problematic types of projects than others? I mean, mostly what this board has been weighing recently, what we see as a real need for this town are, you know, high-density residential, you know, three, four stories, I don't know how many units per acre could be potential there, but, you know, so lots of flow, but are there, you know, I don't know what a good example would be, if you said, "Oh, at the end of the line at Marson's Mills, yeah, that'd be really tough out there," or something. Are there any specific kind of points for type of project or area that raises a red flag?
Not knowing all the specific projects that you're potentially anticipating, but no, I don't believe so. I think we're, I think we're well-positioned and we'll be well-positioned to deal with what we realistically expect to come, and if something else comes, we'll figure it out.
And just as an extra point, this obviously comes up in site plan review, where if you notice something that's going to go in, what's there is insufficient, we're going to talk to the developer about upgrading that infrastructure.
Right. And we sit on site plan review amongst others. So DPW, DPW has a representative on the site plan review process.
To have a good thumb on the pulse for what things could be coming down the line.
Right.
Yeah. And then kind of my last question, the overarching is, you know, I mean, you know, how can this board help? You know, what, what types of things in the zoning and in the bylaws and, you know, as we look out to the future, help? What hurts, you know, the development of sewer infrastructure? Is there...
So, I mean, from my perspective, the thing you guys need to do the most is what we talked about very early on, which is, I don't want to come to a point in time where you come to us and say, "Hey, you never told us the Title V is going, the Title V regulations are going away, and we're caught empty-handed here in terms of how we deal with development, because now all of a sudden it's going nuts and we have no control over it." Where I, and I'm not, but where I on your board or where I part of the thinking process for your board, it's just, let's start to anticipate, in the next 10 years, these areas in red are no longer going to be governed by Title V regulations. Is that a good thing? Is that a bad thing? And what do we want it to look like if it's not? 20 years from now, those areas in green are no longer to be governed. Is that a good thing? Is that a bad thing? And what do we want it to look like? Now, your local comprehensive plan, I'm assuming, will help inform that conversation, because that's going to tell you what the community wants to look like as it goes forward, I'm guessing. But I think it's, where, where the board now needs to go with this is to start to say, "Okay, as we look at this map, we can anticipate in the next decade, two decades, and then
we can anticipate in the next decade, two decades, and then ultimately three decades out, what is probably governed growth in many ways, or at least governed law expansion in many ways is going away. What do we want to have in its place? And like our other conversations, to my way of thinking, where you want to be is prepared for that reality. You know, luck's when opportunity meets preparation. You want to be prepared so that when it happens, you guys are lucky about the fact you're well positioned, ready to go, and it all works out great. I mean, that's, that's the thing we need the most. And then just keep talking to us. If you have concerns, if you have questions, talk to Kelly. If you want us back, we're certainly happy to come. I mean, I think you've seen that we're, we're, you know, we're shy and we don't like to talk a lot. Um, so, you know, on and on and on. I just can't get a word in edgewise. Um, but, but we're happy to have these conversations because I think it's important. I think it's important that the entities work together. I mean, if we're going to make a success out of this, and I honest, I'm, I'm kind of one of the true believers. I'm sort of one of the zealots in this thing. I believe this will work and I believe it will be good. And I actually believe it's a good thing for my kids to do this. Um, we all need to work together to get there. Do you want to add to that?
Well said.
On and on and on.
No, but really, as, as Rob said, certainly please, you know, feel free to reach out. I know I, I didn't, this is really Rob's forte here is talking through the technical questions. I'm here to help break it down and help you be able to talk to, you know, members of the community, your friends, your neighbors, your family. So please don't be shy in reaching out if you have questions about specific properties or even just how we're communicating to the public, or if you have suggestions as well.
Great. Well said.
I, I have just a quick question. So what was the average gallons, gallons per day per bedroom you, you found when you did your study?
I'd have to go back and look.
Was anything close to 110?
No.
Thank you.
No, and I understand your point. One 10 is conservative. We know it's conservative. It's really more of a max day than it is an average, but.
That number's been the death of hundreds and hundreds of new homes, houses, affordable housing projects. And, and otherwise it could go through 20 year history, but that is the number that's killed everything.
Right. But 110 though is part of the Title V regulations.
Right, exactly.
And so once Title V regulation is no longer governed, that goes away to some extent.
It's about time. It's a chemistry problem. It's a math problem.
Yep.
It's about time. It's, it's wonderful to see all this happening. I read through the entire plan. It's fantastic. And it looks like it's very well done and, and hats off to you guys. It's a big job.
Thank you.
Well said. But obviously a lot for all of us to think about. So, yeah.
Cool. Any else we can answer for you?
What else? Good? Jim, anything?
No. Thank you guys so much for coming out. I really appreciate it.
Really appreciate your time tonight, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you both. Well done. Well done. Yep. All right, moving along. Uh, chapter 91 notices, uh, 710, 713 Sea View Ave Realty Trust Pier Ramp Float Sea View Ave Barnstable, uh, environmental notification form proposed San Yen Nick Beach Long Term Coastline Resiliency Project. And chapter 91 notice 142 Willow Run Drive for a pier. Staff updates. Um, Jim, you want to talk about LCP or, uh, the weekly recap?
Yeah, I'll do it real quick for you guys. Uh, so the LCP phase two, uh, is going to be starting back up in, uh, mid-October. Um, you know, we're engaging for our consultant for phase two, uh, and hope to get them, uh, online soon so we can start, uh, getting everything ready for our committee and then getting back out there to the public as well as we begin to draft, uh, each of these issue areas. Um, weekly recap, real quick, uh, nothing, uh, nothing exciting as DPW here, but we have been meeting with a lot of, uh, interested developers, uh, looking at conceptuals and actually several that have gone beyond, uh, conceptuals, as you may have seen in the papers. Uh, 307 Main Street is, uh, before Hyannis Historic tomorrow night, uh, for 120 unit apartment complex of mixed income. Uh, 201, uh, Main Street is the old Cascade boarded up motel, uh, that is proposing 98, uh, mixed income, uh, units that are before historic in two weeks. Uh, and so that's been a work in progress over, over the many, uh, weeks and months. Uh, and there's been actually a number of, uh, success stories in the design stage. I'm eager to see, uh, them get to, uh, construction, uh, with the new zoning. It's unlocked, uh, several small developments on Barnstable Road, North Street, Stevens Road, South Street, uh, just, you know, underutilized properties such as the old, uh, 711 on North Street that's boarded, that's boarded up is now going to be, I believe, eight unit apartment building. Uh, just really, I think in my opinion, quality redevelopment of this underutilized properties, which is the whole intent and purpose of the, uh, the new zoning for downtown Hyannis. So it's, it's moving in the right direction, uh, and quicker than I was expecting. So that's exciting. Two other small, or not small things, but we are, uh, uh, working towards RFPs, our request for proposals for the redevelopment of the Marston Mills School. Uh, we've gotten a lot of questions recently about what is going on at the old Marston Mills School now that we're tearing it down. Uh, and we will be engaging in kind of in a public process, uh, master plan process of that site. Uh, that's what Rob was referring to when he talks about getting down 28. Uh, anything that goes there, we anticipate sewers. So it, you know, we're not, uh, in a rush to, to get to construction because we know sewer is about six, eight, uh, uh, years out, uh, or, or maybe sooner hopefully. Um, in addition, similar, as similar project at the Barn, uh, Barnstable Adult Community Center, looking at, we own property next to that, uh, looking at a, a small, maybe redevelopment opportunity there as well.
Where's that? Barnstable, the Barnstable Adult?
Uh, Adult Community Center on 28, um, right across from the new 850 Thelma Throw Apartment Complex.
Next to the middle school.
Yeah, right next to the middle school, right behind the high school. Um, so we own a small lot there. Maybe potential for a, a nice, small quality redevelopment that the town would spearhead. Um, and so that's, that's it from the, the last week.
Phenomenal. That's great. And the, um, it's, it's so amazing to hear the momentum of these projects downtown. It's exactly what we were all hoping for when we, when we did that form based code. And, uh, yeah, that's pretty exciting for this board.
Jim, uh, the guidelines that were discussed, uh, with the, what, basically, um, with the, was it the historical commission?
Yep.
Is that right? Are they, so now do they have a revised real set of guidelines that they now can speak to in terms of considering these, the two projects that you were talking about?
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. Right. Actually, so the, the, the proposed design guidelines are still, are still proposed. However, I have provided them to the applicants and they are seeking to meet those as well, though they're not on the books as, as regulations at this time. Uh, however, I will say that those proposed design guidelines are on our planning and development webpage at Barnstable, uh, thetownofbarnstable.com to, um.
Still in the public comment period, right?
Public comment period. So, uh, you know, if anybody out there is interested and want to provide comment, we have through, I believe it's September 15th to provide comment. Uh, and then I, I will hope to, uh, take in those comments, adjust accordingly, and then come back before this board and the historic, uh, district to, uh, get those, those guidelines adopted hopefully. Uh, but to your point, uh, the architects for each of these projects have been provided those and have so far have met, uh, most of the projects have met it to the T. Some of them are, are working towards it still. Um, but, uh, certainly going to be, uh, an inter, um, an interesting, uh, few weeks as we, we dive into those designs.
That's great to hear. Good job for that. Um, is there going to be an RFP out for the consultants for the, the next phase of the LCP?
It is, it has been out and we did receive responses back. I haven't seen, uh, those, those, um, results yet.
So a selection hasn't been made?
A selection hasn't been made just yet, no.
And, uh, the other thing, just to clarify, the, with the Marston Mills School, the, that is still a town property?
Yes. So a school property until it was discontinued and handed over to the town. So the town owns that property, um, and we're actively demoing and, and leveling the site.
I just, for my own, again, as opposed to the fire district taking possession of it and then taking that on the, it was a spirited discussion recently of, of exactly that, um, in, in Katoit.
How many acres is that Marson Mills property?
I want to say it's, uh, close to 14. Uh, I, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I believe it's around that. Yeah.
It's kind of deceiving. You drive around 28, you kind of like looked over. Actually, it connects up to that, I forget the name of that road that drives down to the cash market. Is that Main Street? Is that Main Street Marson Mills? Did what's, then what's the?
It's a huge street.
Yeah.
I can imagine that you didn't know that it was.
That's Main Street Marson Mills? But what's the, what's the gas station on? Is that not Main? Oh, that's 149.
149.
That's, that's Main Street Marson Mills to me. It's 149.
There you go.
You know, yeah.
That's that for me. For the Katoit folks, that's Main Street.
It's a big site. All right. Well, thank you, Jim. That was great. Any other board members with any questions for Jim? Comments? Okay. All right. Um, let's see. So approval of minutes. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the July 31st, 2023 draft minutes?
Moved.
Thank you, Matt. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. All those in favor? Matt? Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.